Yeah, I.
Yeah, she probably had. Right.
Especially. Yeah, so.
The most definitely I'd be looking back.
I just.
I would say.
Um.
Uh huh.
You ruin my.
There we go.
Oh, come on.
Okay, so. At least you have to have a certain.
Hmm.
Very good.
I don't think this is how it's. Sound about.
Hey. So. One's the one. I'm doing for I did. I'm. All right, there's not. Yeah. I think it was a. One, because we started all the size of. And it's like. I was. All right. Okay.
And. Good one.
It's six o'clock, so I'm calling this meeting to order. Good evening and welcome, everyone. This meeting is being reported and will be available on the city YouTube channel. Just a reminder to the audience, whether you are presenting or just commenting on an agenda topic, please come to the podium that's near. I'd like to be recognized by the mayor stating your name and address. There is a seven minute time limit. Non-agenda items can be presented under citizens, not on the agenda, but will not be discussed by the council. And above all, please show courtesy and respect with all the signs. We do have two public hearings tonight, and I'll provide some official instructions when we get to that spot. Thank you. New York, please. Here, Amy Ray.
April. Are you gonna watch me or Tom Murray?
Thank you. Well, now move on to item number four, approval of a consent agenda. Council, do you have any questions or comments on the consent agenda? So.
Yeah.
On favor.
I.
I, I, I.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to Rick Spars. We do have his deputy here.
Do I have a quick question? I was looking at the library board minutes from September eighth. And. I have a question, Kathy, on. All the bills were approved except for the parking lot purchase?
That was long, but. It was just standing people that voted against it. I mean, it's already, it's already been, it's a. The purchase was already approved and so. It was just.
Well.
It's their account that they didn't approve of this purchase.
Two of the three.
There was only five people.
There was five who didn't approve.
Three didn't approve.
Three didn't approve, but it still would be paid.
It was already paid and it was approved, he purchased, so.
Right. That's why I'm confused why that's in there.
Because that's the way they voted.
Okay.
I don't think it doesn't change the fact that it already purchased, I mean.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, now we'll move on to item number five, reports. Are there something? If it's up to the poll, thanks.
Well, we can share since it's eight hours, that was net per contract hours the last month. Uh, they didn't purchase. Direct count.
Your deputy counts, right?
Yeah, that counts.
Uh, will have any questions or nothing? Please. Now, oh, yeah. Okay, any questions on any of the other department reports? Hearing none. I need a motion to approve the department reports.
Or should. Sir.
Every done then. Motion by proof, sorry.
Oh.
Todd.
Sir.
Okay. Item number six, they did fine.
I, okay, I.
My background really soon.
Now move on to item number six, which is Alaya Energy that presents some information. I'll hear from Alaya going to present.
We have an oldie but a new thing.
Eric, you turn the. We turn on a little bit or just be kind of.
Very good.
That's fine. Thank you.
Uh, evening everybody. My name is Larry Kerr. I'm applying energy. Principal engineer in our engineering services group that supporting some of early design efforts.
Very nice.
The facility.
He's still trying out just a little bit of line.
Awesome.
I mean, why you standing there?
This one said. Oh. Good, very. So the slide back and go through, give maybe a little bit of background on energy. Um, so as everybody knows, we're very committed to Stronger's land's energy. Um, they have a balanced portfolio, uh, we're pursuing. And the proposed by them, give you a little bit of background on is related to that. Um. Pretty striking balance between, um, for rules and. And dispatchal energy generation and in a particular case, it's a gas bearing facility. Um, we're proud to serve, um, have many electric customers throughout the state. Two hundred twenty-five thousand gas customers, see on the slide. Uh, what half our energy comes from, uh, reliable, uh. For noble energy. And natural gas can play a pretty important role in our. Our generation portfolio, so slide. So. Can talk a little bit about the, uh, town guards of identity gas buying cycle facilities and what we're. Proposing here, um, Alliance has a couple of other facilities within the state. Apparently, uh, one in Mason City, one in Marshall Town, uh, one completed in two thousand four, the other. They turned off seventeen, so. Most friendly this type of facility, um. Feel it strikes to be balanced between what we need to do there. Marry up of our rules. Um, this area is particularly, uh, beneficial just because of our. Electrical infrastructure in this area, uh, growing the IPC, there are a lot of new transmission plan. Um, of transmission, uh, substations being planned as well. Uh, submission gas in the area, uh, really good utilities from, uh. An order from location. So what is the, or what is the mining cycle facility? We're proposing a. A two-on-one facility and being composed of. Two combustion turbines, two heat recovery steam generators and steam turbine. Um, so in a nutshell, the combustion turbines will, uh, generate power on the rest of the two of them. Really high exhaust headers coming out of the two recovery feeds and basically a boiler is repair system generator. Uh, generate steam, plus some interesting turbine, that would be the third generators, probably energy generators in this proposed facility. Um, super high efficiency, uh, one of the highest efficient, uh. Excuse me, thermal cycles if you can, um, design. Um, it would be more adventurous than there are there two facilities as well, just advanced with the technology. Um. The, uh, I guess one special feature in this proposed site is an air-cooled condenser. Our other two facilities use a, um. A wet evaporative cooling tower, um, guys are probably clear with other industries and ours as well. Um, cool using evaporative cooling techniques and air and generates generally a water vapor plume. As the means to discharge that energy. In this case, essentially this scheme will be leave of the plant going through air-cooled condenser, um. Not generating the fluid associated with the, uh, with that facility. Um, they're also greatly reduced water consumption and wastewater generation. Um, another defining feature that maybe other facilities don't do, this, uh, uh, facility is promoted to be all indoors. So, uh, with that, it allows for this, a potential noise generation. Allows us to work on it pretty much year round and keeps it, uh, resilient and reliable, so you can. Because of, uh, even on very extreme weather circumstances. So some of the components I've already talked about a little bit, but you can kind of see in color coded on the, on the screen, so much in term of building. It's like that white purple area, the lower of area. Um. The, yeah, the red, one just area for bottom is where the, uh, recovery steam generators located. Purple stacks located on the bottom side, uh, green areas. Left, it's steam turbine. You can see those three devices stem on the north into that building and working up. That are the, uh, that would be the like a lot for the plants, uh, yellow would be more a common administration warehouse, uh, maintenance building area. Then the, uh, bottom lower, but and quarters, the air-cooled condenser, so. Have a larger feature, but, uh, they're needed all day, keep rejection. Um, so the next slide you can see is a little. Combined cycle facility in this case, um, and not exactly what we're building, but, uh, kind of a 3D representation of what it would look like. Um, so it's same components that you saw on the previous screen, but the addition of the substations which are up front. Um, a typical footprint, uh, just inside kind of the green area would be in the neighborhood of. Um, twenty-five, thirty acres, um, the site is generally larger, so we can, um. It's sufficient with setbacks for, um. The bulk of quotes and portions is helping with sound, uh, separation of neighbors. Very low noise facility with a lot of features that were. Bringing the bear. And, uh. It's a little bit off the schedule, um, so we're in a. Very early design phase with the, with the project, uh. Early equipment for terminal bearings. Uh, for, uh, detailed design, can operate next year, um, permitting as well. Uh, site selection, so you can put it up that. Before we throw it in, there was that. This person, we think about three years, twenty-seven, thirty, and operation. Was inserted in twenty-three. Central item with a little. Questions?
Roll seven.
I, um, I think they're over. Well, my, oh, I'm sorry, iteration. And we usually have a decreaseable life of at least thirty years, uh, typically we, I don't know, maintenance wise, I think our facilities go, uh, things are much longer from in day. Um. So that's usually what we design with us, usually very, very.
Um, um.
The new, which, which feature the, uh, exhaust stacks or the chemical condenser. So the stacks would be the tallest component on site. Uh, it's really heavily dependent on air permitting, so we'll have to do an air model of the sites that takes into consideration. The surrounding terrain, uh, ambient air model data from. Uh, a reasonable amount of that, it's like a thirty-year data set, and that will set the height, but the height could be. The shortest is probably hundred ninety feet, uh, the tallest is, I think. It's gonna be thinner on what the air policy is, but I'm too busy with the proper topic.
Austin, do you have any questions for now before we get any more public comments here? Can you explain a little bit more? Like how the condenser he like works compared to that, this is to us in Marshall Town that has the.
Yep, that's so. A typical plant will use a, uh, evaporative cooling tower, so it's, you're using it to condense the steam in the back of the steam turbine, so. You have cold water that leaves the tower, it goes in the condenser. It condenses the steam about the liquid, the water gets hot and hot, the hot water has to go back up to the tower. Uh, if it was over some fill with some things that are drying air up through it, so just evaporative cooling and you're basically. You're evaporating water, so that's what we see as like, I'm sending the base, so you're. Sending that day atmosphere, in this case, we're actually using water to condense the steam here, you're actually having the steam, you can see that. Lower pitcher. Right in front of the air-cooled condenser is a really large duck, it's probably fifteen. Diamper maybe larger and it's actually a low pressure steam. It's a steam evaporating that leaves the facility. That goes through what in essence is, uh. Akin to like a power radiator, um, and just. Excuse me, good vent cooler style with fan blowing over, and so. There is no. There are no liquid, there was no waters except for what's inside the. Uh, the tubes and that, you know, so.
So it's like a giant radiator.
Giant radiator, yeah.
I just have a question if I'm open. Um, it's rumored that this facility still. The output for that, I mean, each, we have a full notch of power. They're preparing for planning and that there's potential for any plans to go. Is there any terms for that and where would those sites go at?
So, um, so land energies already filed, uh, uh, G C W application for. Excuse me, a facility in Marshall Town, I know so that's. Set across the sense of teaching facility, it's great, the Russian turbines. Um, it's online on the Iowa Imperial Commission, so I've done more about it. So that was in the works, um, this facility is not really, don't think it is being intended for. Any one customer or a group of customers, it's a network asset that we use for all our customers, so. Um, is the output of this plant, so the smallest of planet, we probably is in the. Seven hundred megawatt, so, um, and to answer your question around about wait, network won't buy itself. It's a needs. Excuse me, of that, uh, of the data centers. However, there's, you know, network access to their, their generation resources. Well, there are several definitely else, but I'm not aware of any of the just what is it close to.
Wait, we have some questions in the back as well. Do you have the topic positions rather than having everybody individually walk up to the podium, could you repeat their questions so that we can all hear them?
Sure.
It's someone in the back.
So my question is, has, uh, Alaya done new studies? Which way the plume is going to be going? And no kind of material will come out of the plumes?
So the question was, has Alaya done a modeling for the. One direction of plume will be, I mean, I feel out of the stacks of the, I mean. Um. Everyone's gonna be in the constituents in the, uh, in the pool. So this is a, you know, we're highly regulated, so we will. We will actually apply for an air comment through, um, if it's in one county, it'd be through Lake County Hill, they'll give you to ID and arm. Then we can get. We will have to do the air modeling that will, um. That will dictate where, where those, which, excuse me, direction. And, uh, all of this issue, and so we are. We're guided and held, actually my law, what we have to have for emission levels. And ground concentration levels that sort of brothers, credit your site dollars usually is the. Is the limit, so those are all critical first drive them. Others. You know, they're probably very important, so they, uh, they, uh. Yeah.
What are your hybrid proposed sites?
Well, this particular facility, this is the area, and so when I say this is the area. Are necessarily meaning, um, you know, kind of big cedar or perfect city limits, it's. Generally in this area, we have, there's, uh. We're actually through a, a transmission site process, we're selected the one fast tracks, um. Uh. Interconnection, so one of the big things with a, a new plant is you can have there a secure. Transmission outlet for the facility. And historically, that's taken years to get through that queue. And the, uh, regulators have recognized that that's awkward, slow process, so they. Offered up the ability to, it's called areas process to, it's expediting that, uh, bringing process. And we were selected, uh, with this site as an interconnection, our interconnection is over in the big cedar site. So that doesn't necessarily mean build a big cedar. But it does mean we can build in a reasonable proximity. So we can do an interconnect there or have a movement of an interconnect that's nearby.
But if you don't build in, you can build. Right?
Yeah, I think that's a possibility, uh, but further out you go from the interconnection, it's just. Or more cost and or a new. Uh, well, it's, it's a regulated asset, so we're, you know, break face that, so that's at the end of the day, so. It would back. The more it costs, it will, it doesn't just grow. How many people would be employed in? Um, so the question is how many, um, how many employees will we have at the plant, um? This is a model, I'm sure, uh, for mine cycle facilities, I mean, they're in the neighborhood of twenty-five full-time employees, um, comprised mostly of operators, but, uh. There's a small name staff and administrative staff as well.
So when you kind of stats, the temperature coming out of the stack. So you're saying that there will never be like a cloud or a park that there's certain type of.
So the, the, the emissions from that we talked about earlier, so the question is, is there any time of the year that it'll be, uh. A visible emissions coming out of the stacks? So two different components, there's the air-cooled condenser, that's getting rid of all the heat, that was being hot air coming out of that. The two, uh, combustion turbines rehearsing outlet stacks that are at a higher elevation, um, those will see combustion by by products coming out of the. Um, uh, the combustion turbine, all it remove, it'll be down to. Under two hundred degrees, but it has a leak to the, the stack, um. Products of combustion on a. Facility like this is pretty common to have. Well, it's gonna have a certain component of water treatment, so water vapor has it, pools in atmosphere depending on the ambient vision. Greater than their climate, so. Is that? All the time, absolutely not, either way. Whatever planets, certainly this. It would be kind of a cold, but so.
Why I'll say. Sorry, why is it needed? Because right now we've got pattern, it's basically needed. Centers in the.
Um, why is it needed? It's a little bit out of my, um, potential, I'm on the technical side of. Supporting the facility, uh, the game of our resource planning effort that, uh, indicated. Here's the current level, your generation. Here's our plan, retirement, and then here's the, uh. The favorite units and types of units that we need, that, that's, which I think is filed with, uh, I see this, uh, and the declaration, whatever. Let's do it. For the generally doing, uh, it would be a valid this privately, like. What they from all the time. So the question is whether or not this equipment will be continually running, um, so combined cycle plants are. They're a little bit, uh, more elaborate, but a typical simple cycle plant that would just be combustion turbine, they kind of start just. Um, these are typically done when you, because they're much more efficient. They're more expensive and complex to build and own and operate, um. So it will, uh, it generally will run with a really high capacity factor, in other words, it'll run. You want us to live in all the year, but it'll run. Quite a bit. So, uh, I have to march on. Yes, it'd be very similar. The very defining difference will be the air-cooled condenser versus the power. Building towers have a, there are noise source with, uh, cascading water, it's kind of out of its own. Noise where it's, uh. The damper like this will. Fan base, there's something that I hope that they can always push.
Oh, I'm concerned that I could get more than two. So why do you think so many come down, get like like fifteen dollars or whatever? So basically make that boom. Big boys off, right?
It can be pretty flat, right? They can be, they can be.
Thousands of bars, it's possible that boom. Well. For here, for, for.
So we're actively, that's sort of the question, whether or not, uh, from this can have. Can have a horizontal component to, that can, uh. Impact air report attracted. Um, so we are in the middle of modeling, uh, that. Kind of in the early stage, but it'll be. Couple months before with the results from it, but, uh, with, that's not something we've typically done in the past, the. Robles, the airports, uh, we have a number of facilities that are within. Two to five miles of airport, so. Will be likely in that range, um, the, the earliest spot that we identified in the west end of, uh, Cedar is. Um, or how this is another location, so that is. Currently not the active, so. We're looking for sponsors or less. Present less of a actual person hazard to.
So what would you say your water usage should?
So typical one, so the two plants that we currently have, um, combined cycle plants can evaporate cooler type, um, ones take a lot of water. So it makes the city plants use unwell water and. Uh, also takes some true event from a true plan. And our, uh, Marshall Town, so when you take city water. Um, with air-cooled condenser, you're taking. Whole plant facility between one and one twenty of the amount of water to put for that. So, so. It very, it. Don't want to get around the body answer, but it really depends on ambient conditions, moderate condition, do you have water? Golden condition. Less. Um. The combustion turbine feature evaporate to learn the inlet of the turbine. Uh, whether there's. Take more power out, otherwise, that's much determined clearly. He waited in the summer time when I'm doing a cool off.
Eric, can you say you get how much water? Approximately, give or take.
Half of. It is really hard to pin down, um, I can give you maximums, uh, and that maximum will be in the. Again, subject to detailed design, we're very, so we're using this kind of as a screening tool to. Work with communities like Fairfax to support water beams, um, that could support or whether we have to, uh, pursue wells. So kind of on the upper end, hot summer day, max load. Two hundred fifty gallons of air farm.
Two hundred fifteen.
Yeah, it's proven it.
Proven.
And a cooling power plant with thousands of gallons.
So trying, grandstanding things, is that a lot? That's a little. Not much, I can, uh, I can get out of.
No, it's a lot of what we talked about before.
Prox number, obviously on the higher side.
Yeah. Higher. And for example, at Marshall Town, we, we build a water storage tank to, uh, use the buffer, so there's a. Off off, so at night. It's not uncommon, even though we won't necessarily run continuously, we will generally run continuously. It's pretty common that at the middle of the night, they'll blow. Sleep, I mean, electricity. Uh, factories are not, you know, maybe they don't have other shifts, so the load comes down quite a bit. But it's, uh, generally it's, it's pretty, because it's a two on one. You can turn off on combustion turbine, for instance, and still stay up pretty high and. Um, or will, don't continually, uh, use water, but it's a, a fraction of it very quickly. Over there.
So this whole facility turns on as its need is. Hot this summer during the day, if it's gonna be cool seventy degrees all week long, it may not run here.
Potential, right, it's, uh, it's really, it's completely low dependent, they'll get, uh, you'll win for the gas, they'll look at solar for gas, uh, they'll look at. Other facilities that may be maintenance outage, uh. Whether, you know, all the things to play with. For the gas would be.
So it's not something that's twenty-four hours a day when we're at Marshall Town. I'm surprised to hear that, that. You, I think they're. What, six, eight hours ahead of time, they're told when to cycle on, when to cycle off, they can't be, um, they might be, uh, running through the night anyway, just a little load. And they'll get that, the man's notice, they'll, they don't have, so, so it's not a constant, always, uh, uh, it can be, certainly, they're, they're designed to be cycled. They're designed to, in my cycle plants, we. Wouldn't have that flexibility to, uh, here he is, if you compare to this, some of the old. These little plants like our, our coal plants, those were really designed to turn on or leave on as long as possible, unless they had a maintenance reason to take it off. We just living at different time hour, that flexible with the call. Very. That would. I would expect this to be for a lot. I don't know, but this bad forecast is, I'm sure it's, it's not low, it's probably apparently high, it's.
Excellent, thank you for being here tonight, for you to get the information, I said, I'm very proud of you here, um, so this will be a gas run facility.
Yeah, the question is whether or not it's a gas run facility, yeah, it'll be, yes, natural gas.
So where for those, those events, the industry projects, and then what is that? Um, super cost for the electricity and gas, is that offset? Perfect residence for that or? Um.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's an important sighting topic as well, you want to have your access to your fuel, um. So natural gas wise, we. So natural gas wise, we have a number of different options we're pursuing uh that America is the uh is the local uh gas supplier in the area, they have some facilities. Um this would uh they would not be able to serve this without basically upgraded, so that America, it would be an option, uh going straight to the interstate pipelines and to a dedicated line to the to the site would be an option. And some of those uh options could include an open season where, you know, that America, we didn't go to them. They'd have an opportunity to um, you know, build with us and it'd be like a toe uh benefit, I I mean it there would still be on that interstate pipeline. Um alternatively, that as we're contemplating in Marshall Town, uh we filed a um plan to file a uh Edoque or installing our uh lateral through the site, so we would want to operate that just for the purpose of that facility, since we don't have a gas pool.
And you talked about shutting down for a sign because I suppose you never heard our lights on. What about the A S N, they shut down at nine o'clock, you're probably pretty heavy for the front of him, look tightly.
So I understand that it's uh not all data centers are created, well, some of them, so the question is, do we, you know, do we follow uh the data centers? If they're at high load. Um short answer is, I'm not sure what their profile is. I think different data centers have different uh capabilities that they can fluctuate to actually help out. The package generation where they can minimize their use, and that's I'm talking for minutes and hours on per day. My understanding is that they're they're on high load profile there.
There are any noise off associated with it when it's on?
There certainly will be some noise generation, um large rotating footprint, there could be air. I can probably speak, Marshall Town would be probably a good example. Um at the time we built Marshall Town, um we did not, there was not a noise ordinance associated with the plants, they usually will first that fits, correct, apply with whatever the overall ordinances or laws are regarding uh sound efficiency. Uh it seems sort of here's receptor uh at residential, we would feel sensitive, I believe. I'm a hundred percent sure about Fairfax, I heard in Fairfax, I said in Lawrence, they have some noise ordinance, if they don't. Uh like in Marshall Town's case, we actually self-repose a woman, we did a background study. Established what what is it, are there's no is receptor? And then we would uh have a contractor that's designing this document, so where they grew older to for instance, in that case, I think there was uh five E P A uh principles uh of the background, so I had that I had that receptor in that region. I think it's generally uh accepted knowledge that I think three E P A is kind of a threshold of human speed to to discern a change of course of level, so and in Marshall, I'm sure it's why I was a, we were a little less than a uh that actually our site operated. In that case, our nearest present, let's uh not the just probably about it, so we'll figure out. I think there's no ordinances to have that time or that ones.
What what benefit does this bring to the city of Fairfax?
Great question. Um again, I'll hold it in an air card. With the benefit is you'll have a facility right here, we're not being directly better in front, right, there's a lot of voltage steps that you'll uh and get to you, there will be another generating source, though, in one of our largest service territories in in Iowa, uh Lake County, and say the highest loaded area of um data centers are not, see that's the margin. Case, so. There is uh tax, uh revenue, um that's a topic way way out of my league, but uh I think local communities do benefit from generation tax, so disproportionate, but how about our whole groups?
I can give you a little information about that. So the state of Iowa sets utility excise taxes on utility property based on the amount of um energy they generate. And um I did today get on the city of Marshall Town's current budget to see what their projected revenue is in utility excise taxes for this fiscal year. And I don't know if it's all aligned, it's probably a mixture, but I would think it's probably the bulk of it is the plant was one million six hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars. Our current utility excise tax revenue projection is eleven thousand, two hundred and eleven. So quite a bit of difference, but again, I don't have a lot of detail um of that Marshall Town breakdown number.
That makes sense, your question, when when she's, what she said, eleven thousand is what Fairfax brings in and Marshall Town told as a city over one point six million. Kind of helps to round things out a little bit, so that's.
Okay, my other questions.
But you monitor into a deep these is pretty tall stack, what what's the purpose for that?
So it's uh so the actual H R S G building, uh this is kind of a larger, what, delivery break in front of the stacks. Um that is the boiler, boiler itself, the boiler building is about, but question of what was the purpose of the the height of the stacks? You're kind of limited, you gotta be called boiler. And I've seen stacks the shortest, five feet above the boiler building, or boiler building itself will be hundred and forty to hundred and fifty feet tall. So back into that is why the stack, because it's a really tall. It's not like a lot of our coal plants where exhaust just goes in the bottom of the stack without, there's a bridge units hundred feet tall, that's uh the whole boiler next to the bottom, so it's got to be at least a certain height. Um both work combined, so the plants, I think, are just shy of two hundred feet, one of them. Um and that was almost solely based on uh emissions, uh emissions model said that normally it's ground level concentrations at our boundary as meet E A limits. You know, that this sort of time, that's there's no advantage to make the stack any taller. So I thought it's so it's a M K A ground level concentration, right?
Then you said there is certain amount of water being prepared out of the stack, what else? What would be other efficient?
So there's obviously your your combustion, uh carbon-based fuels, so there's C O two uh very high complete combustion, so it's mostly C O two, if it's carbon monoxide. Or actually, I have a C O catalyst, I go back to the first stage that will oxidize it, turn it, so it's just going to have carbon monoxide emission. And then burn a fuel that has nitrogen in there, so if you must uh any fuel that will appear which you have to, you can put oxygen to come out of it, you're gonna make nitrous oxides. So there's also maybe a box, uh S R with a mode rejection in the boiler to reduce those emissions as well, so that's to the primary pollutants, um particular emissions is it's mostly like invincible type of emissions as opposed to when you have a coal plant have a smaller rate of emission from converting a solid fuel, a space, you're very, yes, it's fuelless, so. I'm sure there's other trace, trace items, and a lot of airport many experts, I'm not sure what uh or solar, I decided is another disport, but natural gas generally has very low sulfur content, uh so that's usually the some core problem issues.
Beautiful. How would this be compared to like the A V F? Like now, and it's basically the K.
Honestly, I'm not, so the question is, how does this compare with the A D M stack? Um I looked for that the other day in their their performance by line. I don't want to disclose what what I thought I saw, I thought it was in the breaking or foot range, but very possible facility, it's super common for those facilities to have a taller stack. You know, with a certain amount of draft out of it as well. They're very, you know, hotter hotter emissions coming out of their stacks, if they're near the the fuel they're purging is sulfur, and if you cool down your exhaust, you ask too much, and the boiler, it makes it more efficient, but also generates acid, it has some tiny acid in the sack in the quarter, so politicians, I think, but they're reinforced waters and all that. They're good, I quit, or they're um they're also decent, probably like so, so very
The House Counsel?
Yeah, a few questions. So obviously, we're talking a lot about the plume or what the stacks look like. When we had to go off of this, is A D M and near that area. The tour in Marshall Town, the picture that I had, we will really see nothing. Your pulpit will be stacked, you really see nothing coming out of them.
In most of them, that's true, it's uh it's really ambient weather dependent, the stuff coming out of the stack with the inventory is the same all the time, we didn't know. There's really no difference, so it's the ambient conditions are right, the humidity is high enough, if it's cold enough out for the points, right? You'll you will probably see some.
A whis.
Yeah, that's see someone is what I was told.
So we can't compare A D M, to help these guys understand, you can't compare A D M to what these two stacks?
It probably would be a great comparison. Are uh I don't even know what the, probably for another plant, or for a freak station unit or um not the tall stack, that's currently, that's one of the two um that use that stack, that's called a good engineering practice stack, large, tall um concrete stack, that's um that it's in a top operation and cool by the end of the year, so. Um but the shorter stack next to it, it's a gas, gas-fired, so it it's kind of improved, we're running, so it's probably not a great example of what it got, but yeah, A D M probably isn't a super great example, plus, you know, A D M's that cool with towers. Um they don't just make power for their own uses, they also process steam. So that's a little little different operation, we had that coolant tar is probably consistently generated. You're a little something.
Another question, when we did our tour thirty years shelf life. Um but at the end, built into this is the decommissioning of the plant, so literally it's returned to whatever it was before the building started, so it looks exactly like that, that's built into.
That's my last two months of that, so I was involved with the um design and construction of the the two combined cycle facilities we talked about, and I think at the time, the Iowa Utility Commission didn't have a decommission, um I had a requirement, I I believe it does now, I don't know. Yeah, I think it does, yeah, I know our solar and battery wins, I think, I can't imagine that the uh any dispatch would have that thing.
Later on in our packet, there's a study that someone brought on, that was very informative about studying like Superior, a by dilute. I think that's a lion, that's another electrical company about what that produced as far as C O two and are you familiar at all with that or?
I saw something in the materials, was that like a Harvard study, or is there something else?
Something Stanford or Stanford?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it was a student, but they prefer students when.
No, I think it's an organization based on environmental
So with studies, objects.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't look at it.
Yeah, but I don't know if you're familiar with that plant and to make this, that plant up there.
It worked, and a lot of it. They move forward with it based on their studies and all the information that they gathered. They said, no, they couldn't do it.
Okay, so the comparison of what that proposed plant would be compared to this proposed, so you probably would have no idea what that is or so.
I, yeah, I would, I'd have to look to see why, why are they didn't I, and we will have to go through we have to get an air permit, you can't start a construction until you have an air permit, so that's an open and public process, uh everybody's able to see those steps and comment during the process, the Iowa Utility Commission has an R P and a G C U process that will have to go through with the regulated utility. Um so that's again, another process that's got a lot of transparency, we'll see all the filing materials. Um the I U C has you know, governments whether or not to build a plan and that's that's probably the main disorder.
Is there any health concerns with having a plant so close to our residential or
so uh is there any health concerns with having a plant so close to town, all's I can answer is we're involved with R P P, so that's our safe mission levels. I can't comment whether or not that.
This call, this call is no longer being recorded. That's somebody else's.
Question on the factory with that. I don't recall exactly, but it's just put it in context, you know, the one isn't the top of the big flag downtown about a hundred and forty feet? Doppely? And if that's true isn't, you said the building itself is gonna be about a hundred and forty feet, so then the stacks would then go fifty to a hundred feet higher than that.
Yeah.
Just put it in the context of what it would look like or how it would overwhelm them.
So you've mentioned you're modeling a lot this evening, um historically speaking, how accurate are your models?
So the question is how accurate are the models that they consist stores with, so um very referring to, when your emissions models are referring to like a blue study type model. Some blue studies, that's something new to us, um we've not done that before. Um generally, you know, we have been close to airports, but that has never been so we uh we haven't, uh this will be the first time we're sure a a model like that. There's not like a super accepted path, there's a couple of different avenues that you can use and we're bringing the most reliable one to get something to to tell what that form will look like. Uh again, the visible portion is a lot bigger, but we're seeing it, with what it happens, it will happen, but if we can figure um the air emissions monitoring is very accurate, I guess I, I mean, it's E P A accepted, it's a very rigorous process that you're through, they usually have a bank of computers that they run that will bunch of years, I think, there are a lot of coal data and a little based on the weather patterns, wind, then building the shapes terrain around it, um that take the other emission sources around it. So I forget what might be, so maybe I'd say, well, convert this plant right next to another source, well you're you would be judged by that existing source as well, so you're not able to have concentrations of those criteria improvements in that area that would be elevated, so generally, it's difficult to say, you know, right next to another existing um platform, so.
Is your E P regulation where you hold your standard highs they are, question a little?
Yeah, so there's a question of if the E P A changes their regulations, will we uphold the standards and I mean, we we design a facility to run um to meet those emission limits that were required by law, I mean, there's, you know, jail time and some penalties that could be involved or we don't with them. Then with the power industry for thirty-five years, and I don't think I've ever seen them relax um emissions, and even if they did I don't, there's not a whole lot we can do that would I think you're at the like turning on pollution control equipment, the the units are designed for generally great low emissions to start with. Um I'm not aware that it's ever turned off or would for them to turn off uh emission control equipment very little.
What else have any suggestions on this? Or line? Thank you very much. This was a a regional topic only, so we'll move on. So item number seven.
I'd like to have a couple other items that I had on there, so people when you kind of have an idea of what we're looking at. I'd like to have a couple of other items that I had on there. So people can kind of have an idea of what we're looking at. Cynthia, if you can pull up. Right underneath the lion. Um, proposal that he has. We we had three trips to Marshalltown, three different groups of people and and. I was my last one there last Thursday, and this is when I took these pictures. But I want to give people an idea of how far away or how close it is. To Fairfax and his proposed vacation. But you guys can kind of put. An eye and a. A picture to it.
Sorry, Tom, I'm down.
That's it.
Having trouble with the house, get over the kitchen.
So this is a Google Maps um that Cynthia did. This is the generator in Marshalltown to the top, cornered out the bottom. And then I'll show you another picture coming up. So that's the generating station. And then all the way to the very end up at the top is where I took a couple more pictures. Which they'll be coming in a second, but the distance from from that Marshalltown generating station to the end of where that other line is is.
Twelve hundred and some. Just so you know, everything on the left hand side is a big solar field. So that. That isn't something that would be part of this. That's just what they have in Marshalltown. Like all that's the greatest stuff there. That's all solar, you know.
So that distance is twelve about twelve hundred feet.
And they will not put solar in? No, no, my understanding was no.
So going to the next picture, you're going to see. This is a picture of where we were. Looking at um the power plant. This is twelve hundred feet. This is prairie natural grass. If you can go back just a little and up and look at those stacks, if you would, for a second. This is three or four o'clock on a Thursday afternoon. I don't see anything coming out of those. Sets. A concern and question that I've always had until I went there to see.
And Tom, I was there um. The twenty ninth, I think. And when we were talking to the guy, he said, the only time you would probably see this really, really cold weather. So maybe it will be very is when you might see something, but it would still be. Pretty minimal.
Pretty minimal. Okay. So now the next thing I I think about is I've heard a lot also is how loud is it? Um. At that picture right there, I have an app on my phone. I have no idea how accurate it is. Sixty nine decibels from where that picture was taken at twelve hundred feet away. Now, what does sixty nine decibels mean? Cynthia will go up to the next.
Next picture.
The next picture, please.
Sorry. Some people try to look for the next.
Yeah, and then it snaps now. So this is a chart I pulled off online, you know, plus or minus. So. You can go down to the bottom. Suburban area at night is forty decibels. And I go to that one first because. Sixty nine decibels, my vehicle is off and I can't hear. That plant running. And others that were there, you guys want to chime in, I hear crickets. And stuff over what I can hear from twelve hundred feet away. Just trying to draw a picture for what this plant, what that this plant is. Normal conversation is sixty to seventy. D V. So if you can go to a couple more to the next one, Cynthia.
Yeah, yeah, just uh, I I didn't see that in the packet and um. Kind of familiar with where you took the shots. Uh. Just to note, um. So your meter is probably accurate. Um. But it was using. Decimal total instead of a A weight. It's a when you see it saying D V A or decimalated. It is A weighted is um more what. We hear as humans. So your chart had listed A weighted and it looked like your leader was like raw decibels.
Okay.
So the difference is fifteen to seventeen difference. So it'd be. Lower. Um, ironically, with this site, we're building another combustion turbine site, you know, right next door. So a quarter of a mile away from that. Kind of on the left as you type in the entrance. Uh, so we've already done a new baseline for the site and at the entrance, I think we were. Fifty, well. So before Marshalltown was built, we did a baseline. So this was back in two thousand fourteen. Fifty three decibels roughly D V A at the entrance. Um, the baseline that we just did in June helped us with the sighting of the unit. We'll have to do acoustic treatment to make sure because now Marshalltown goes out of. Having um organs that will. And uh, the measurement with the plant running was three D V A higher instead of fifty three or fifty six. So just to kind of calibrate, so I'd be. Maybe a rule dumb, take fifteen seventeen off what you had and that's.
Okay.
And that'll match your chart then.
Okay, thank you. Um, so this is a picture from the towers. I had no idea what the towers looked like eventually I was there. Um, the gentleman given us the tour, those are twenty feet in diameter. I had nothing to gauge off, but I thought I was going to be staring at something fifty, seventy, five, a hundred feet wide. Uh, twenty feet. And those are a hundred and ninety nine feet off the ground there. Can't really tell what hundred and ninety nine feet mean. Um, you can keep going, Cynthia, please. Well, these are some other around the area that I took outside. Eighty six, eighty nine. So you get closer, it doesn't really get. Get get much louder. Inside, it's louder, but it's it's protected.
Is that the screenshot in there of the Fairfax in the distance to the vault?
Oh, yes, and we missed that second.
The side up?
Okay. So I said twelve hundred feet where I took that first picture, right in Marshalltown. So we did the same thing, distance from this possible location. On where that is. And going up towards Fairfax, that's the sport complex. Three thousand one hundred and sixty one feet away. Compared to Marshalltown picture of twelve hundred, twelve hundred feet at. What was it? Sixty nine D V take a few off from what uh. From what Larry had said. So that kind of gives you an idea. It did for me at least. Maybe it answered some questions for you guys.
I have a question. When you took that picture, were you just right by the prairie? Of like the grass fields and.
I was right at the inside of the emperor.
Yeah, so that is twelve hundred feet.
That was.
So the nearest house is how close to that twelve hundred feet in Marshalltown? It's another east corner.
I didn't.
Easy.
Yeah, I bet I didn't.
So still not the three thousand. If you go to eighteen, you could probably rough it out. I can't remember the exact avenue name. I feel like it's Eighteenth Avenue. If you zoom out on the map, you start having residential homes on what would be the west side of that Eighteenth Avenue. What the exact distance is. I couldn't tell you. You'd have to go to Google Maps yourself on your phone.
Something to just figure out.
Approximate it.
Yeah. Uh, what else? Other quick, just to keep going. I last stopped going. The other, oh, those are sound, sound and. Yeah, the other ones are just other D V around the plant. But the main one being from twelve hundred feet was. Sixty nine E B. And what that means in relation to Fairfax. It's less than half.
I will say, Tom, too, and I because you have to go to a dark station and follow them to let it flood them under there. I didn't even notice that that plant was done. When I compared the.
Yeah.
It it was just normal outdoor.
I agree with that. Which surprised me.
Yeah.
I I had nothing to go off of. And that's where. This stuff has helped to educate you guys. And and it did me and everywhere else that was there. I know there's a lot of discussion going on and we don't know, but this is the information for you guys to take, to put together. Now you have more of an informed opinion of what's going on. That Alliance is trying to present to me, right? Three different tours. Uh, to show us, to show us what's going on. The other thing I wanted to mention in that tour was, I don't know if you guys remember, about the size of the kitchen over here. They have a room that monitors air quality. That's all it is, is computers and dials and everything, and it gets monitored daily. Weekly and monthly. And he opened up the door just a little bit so we could look in there, but. That was another thing I was worried about is, okay, what's the quality like? Couldn't take a picture for obvious reasons, but. About the size of that solid with tools and instruments. So again, trying to help you guys understand what we all seen in this plant tours. You have an idea of what. Of what they do and what they try to maintain.
To answer the individual's question, how close are residents to the Marshalltown plant roughly? Based on the twelve hundred feet to the gate, it's about twenty five hundred feet until you get to residential. So about six hundred feet closer than the sports complex.
So there is a sports complex within that too?
I'm sorry, what?
There is a sports complex within that too.
You mean in Marshalltown?
I don't think so.
No, the the sports complex in Fairfax.
Yeah.
Further away by six hundred feet than the closest residential in Marshall.
Okay.
And in that south Eighteenth Avenue to be exact.
Okay, I do.
Yeah. Yeah.
So how how does that correlate with the future land use map? Warehouses might be in future.
I think future land use map is down the line later on tonight, right? We have, we could pull that map up. Might take a minute or two to get to that, but that's in this packet and we can show you guys.
Our future land use map, I would caution is nothing set in stone. If you're asking what's on the east side of Left of Your Road. It's primarily a lead commercial and. Industrial. To the west of Left of Your Road is residential, but I think a long time ago was established. There's no real. Scenario where residential gets developed west of Left of Your until you get to Wright Brothers. And that's both if the power plant were built and if it were not built because the next stop discussed is the airport. Where they want to put a runway. I don't know if anybody's going to want to build a house where their uh. Runway proposed would be, that's right, where it'd be descending.
But the runway doesn't go any farther than Cherry Valley, which is where they go today.
What's that?
The proposed runway doesn't go any farther than Cherry Valley, which is where they end today. So it it's not in our backyard and.
The runway would be on the. North side of Wright Brothers. And where planes are descending, yeah, east and west, and where planes are descending, it would be along that corridor where the future land use map shows residential.
And let's move on. Excuse me. Let's move on. Item number seven, which is specific to the airport's future plan sounds like one hundred back.
Let's combine both.
Um, we have some information available. I'm not sure if there's a presentation by anyone. I saw a lot of the airport there. I think Marty once. I think Shane was gonna stop. Amber, you gonna present something to Marty to respond to questions?
Yeah, I was just asking for questions.
Okay.
Um, so at P and Z, we presented uh, I had last month's, I need to join me. We presented this exhibit. Um. Obviously. The airport had expressed concerns with the line power plant. Yep, yeah. All right, and Marty presented an exhibit of last month's council. We. That showed um future runway that just previously been discussed here. Located, planned to located north of Bryant, Rossett, Fullard. Um, and obviously. Marty at that beginning last month expressed airport's concern about, you know. Proposed line power plant. In this area, um. But obviously, what is not being considered yet is the possibility of impacts that this future runway has on Fairfax or Fairfax grown. Um, so that runway and that exhibit, it shows the. The proposed runway for the exhibit that Marty presented in council, it shows the uh. The plane pattern coming off the end of it, yeah, taken off the land. And uh, Fairfax's future role area, we expressed that. So Fairfax road. Future road area is a mile. Five hundred feet every day. Immediately west of that. Uh, which is a lot closer than the other. Very many used in that area. Um, if you look at the existing east west runway, the city of Cedar Rapids, Cedar Rapids Airport, none of the same, the U C R X, Cedar Rapids Airport. Um, they purchased property after about eight five hundred feet west of that one. So. That would basically take you out to uh. People grow roads that the city where you acquire the property west of that runway, which. Sorry to say that they would, but obviously they're going to want to protect that area, you know. Make sure that they control the sort of development, if any happens there. Um, and that would be about three hundred acres every day. That's in Fairfax, that's our. Roll panic roll area. So. It would significantly impact what Fairfax could do. Even if they can do anything. Um, and then the area west of that. Basically. Would be significantly impacted by the flight patterns in that area. Marty presented uh. That the planes coming in and out of there basically have a. An angle about, I think it was one foot vertical versus fifty foot horizontal. So if you take that. You're going to have planes, two to three hundred people with that region there. So, you know, what you develop, what city you develop there. Uh, we limited uh what. What anybody wants to develop in that area is significantly limited, if anything. So. This is obviously Fairfax's commercial and industrial growth area. So that has not been considered by the airport and their plan at all. Um, and this isn't just something that's come up recently. This has been embraced since two thousand and one. The city's long term growth area itself, so. Um. The uh. Another thing, I guess, I announced some exhibits that I didn't get a chance to prepare stuff for all of this, but I did have some there's the council. So that excepting exhibit. It's basically something. Changes from now. The airport's long or point point three masters. Master planning uh document, which I think Chris has submitted out to council. Right down there, but twenty forward some information. You know, just in some of those exhibits, it shows all the cities in the area, um, Fairfax, Ely, Walfer, Cedar Rapids. And those exhibits don't show any sort of, it doesn't, it's not even up to date. It doesn't show uh Fairfax's annexation for twenty twenty. It doesn't show uh. Anything with the Cedar Industrial Center. Which was. In the works at the time that this planning not moving works, but obviously that changes a lot for that that whole themselves. So I'd see that in Fairfax. So, you know, planning not missing is just kind of indicating it doesn't take into any consideration. You know, just shows what they had for Fairfax fifty years. It doesn't show anything for Fairfax, current growth level or their plans of future growth. Yeah, next exhibit that I handed up council. Just shows, you know, pages from that master plan. It uh. In that first sheet, it shows, you know, in their twenty year um planning period, that that future runway isn't focusing at twenty years. So, you know, further planning and their growth. That runway. May not happen for twenty, thirty more years. But they're already trying to control and they're capable of Fairfax because we're in Fairfax's role area itself. So, yeah, that's something that. And I think uh, to see Fairfax definitely just taking into consideration uh along with the airport and the entire area. With the consideration of everybody's planning on our growth and what makes the most sense. Um, especially with Big Cedar Industrial Center, roll to the north side of the airport. You know, there's really make sense for runway, future runway to go to. And then that last exhibit that it handed out council, in fact, it was the, you know, some noise, sound stuff. I think Tom had a question about that last. What do I just put up with the information? And that's just taken from that same master plan. Definitely, which is that's the one I put. That uh, on that first page, it shows uh, and I'm not a sound bench for a man, either. But I just thought it was interesting. There's there's the figure eight S two, and it shows. The um. Commercial jet flyover at one thousand feet, decimal is about a hundred and five. I think on that previous exhibit that Tom had presented, it was, you know, pain starts at like one twenty, so it's pushing that limit. And that's a thousand foot flyover, well. And that's a thousand foot flyover, well, based on the information Marty presented last week, and this this. Potential growth area, if we're looking at what, three, four, five hundred feet, not less. So, what kind of solid issues are we gonna have in that area? So, here are just some things that council should consider, uh, you know, Cedar Rapids Airport should consider. City of Cedar Rapids should consider, you know, what is the long-term impact with the future runway to the airport? For for, you know, having on role for Cedar Rapids, for Fairfax, for the region. And also the impacts of Fairfax itself and their building.
And to add one thing to that. By the twenty AM this morning. I woke up to an airplane taken off. Probably a cargo plane last week, and I mentioned to Marty. Here airplanes. I'm assuming, I don't mind any of my airplanes, probably a cargo plane, FedEx U P S, whatever, taken off. By twenty AM. And that early leaving.
You're about eighteen thousand feet from that airport runway.
Yes.
Next to the southeast corner of your.
So, so I live in the area of the water tower over here, and now. You had that air, this proposed runway, whenever it happens, you look at how much closer that is.
Less than half the distance.
Less than half of the distance.
Yeah, so to the, to the proposed uh. The annexation boundary agreement between Fairfax and Cedar Rapids. It's a total of five fifty five hundred feet give or take to that future proposed runway. And uh to that roadway, I think it was about eighty five hundred, so it's how much short, how much close. Here, the corner, the southeast corner of your neighborhood is about eighteen thousand, that's. That's fifty five hundred, eighty five hundred, so less than half, okay. Yeah, my work, you have, how much noise from there? Being in the city line, I'm trying to move it out.
Uncle, I have any questions that Shane and Marty, that's our director is here that. And um, if somebody has, you have any questions on this information?
A couple of questions. Shane, you said twenty to thirty thousand, that's your, Marty, is that?
The 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 master plan just says, it's a twenty year master plan. And there's a paragraph, there you can read it, why didn't you check it down?
Do you have like color context to that, or?
Sure, uh. So, as was, as was mentioned, it's a, well, first off, Marty, I'm sorry, your corrector. Uh, for the eastern airport, uh, as was mentioned, it is a twenty year master plan, we update master plans. Generally, airports update them every ten to twelve years, so. Um, I can't speculate on the runway is gonna go in. Um, so for me to say, you know, it's gonna be year twenty, it could be a total yes. Uh, so I'm not gonna speculate. I mean, there's, there's been tremendous growth in our community across the region that we all benefited from. So, you know, demand dictates. So, we'll continue to evaluate that, so I don't wanna, also, I don't wanna miss, I'd say. It's thirty years now, so I just can't speculate, so do know, it's in the master plan, it's been in the plan for quite some time.
It says the mandate states, but really, there's only about thirty flights, or so they come in and out of the airport, it's usually just a short amount of time for those. Connecting flights, I'm happy that we have an airport, I'm so glad we have one this folks bought, but. How can you, you know, how can you justify another runway, east west runway, when we only have a few? You know, handful of flights that come in a a day.
Yeah, so.
Where does that demand come from, where does that come?
Yeah, so, the question is, uh, do you still want me to? But okay, um, so the question was, did it what? That there's thirty flights a day, um, and how is the demand they pay, the third runway? There are more flights a day than the thirty, the thirty is roughly speaking, is commercial air service, so. The United American Altar, that sort of thing, uh, then we have more uh on a general radiation private aircraft. Operation, um, so, we have annually ru- roughly, I'm gonna give you an approximate, this. I haven't looked at it in a while, for roughly forty thousand annual operations, so. Second busiest airport in the state of Iowa, uh, in terms of passenger service. Um, we also handle roughly. Fifty to fifty one percent of all of the state of Iowa's air cargo. Uh, so that was probably that by me, I'm polite, so. Um, that's roughly fifty, just over fifty percent of the state's cargo, um, is C I B. Um, and then as far as private aircraft, in in a lot of this is. Really driven by some of the large employers in the area, uh, with the highest. Number of base aircraft in an airport in the state. So, we currently have a waiting list for hangers, um, so, you know, as time goes forward. Commission members, you know, years before all of us, you know, this goes back, the land acquisition started over fifty years ago. So I know, apologize for confusion when there was, I think, some thought that there was a fifty year plan. There was, the land purchasing started to fire, that started back in the early seventies, so. The airport's position, uh, unlike a lot of airports in the nation, they're able to handle uh demand as it comes, so. You know, we will continue to evaluate that as it happens, and then the good news is, um, we have as a region. The property volume to meet that as promised. So, that's why I can't speculate when that third runway might happen, as frustrating as that might be, I can't do the thing.
So, does the plan also to, I mean, that runway would be the D U D after reroute traffic on Edgewood Road?
Yeah.
So, does that mean you're gonna put, I know we're on the ground, or do you?
Yeah, so, um, if you, for those that might remember, I think it was. Frank Brothers Boulevard, I mean. Nineteen ninety five, the Frank Brothers Boulevard was relocated further uh north. And then it was actually dwelled. So that's why I have this hill, let's go down the Edgewood. That was originally designed that there might someday be a tax agree bridge over the top of Wright Brothers. Um, there are various conversations, again, this is very early planning, that. Is out there, um, so would Edgewood be in a tunnel of Edgewood? Would likely uh be closed between seventy six and rerouted and Wright Brothers. That is kind of the the conversation, so all of that. Started, I mean, by, so, um, that's why Wright Brothers is the way it is there, so.
Well, the airport volatility, what did that section?
And just as a point of clarification too, for, for all the guests, um. Yes, the city of Cedar Rapids, ultimately is this one, this row of the airport. Were operated by the airport commission, so the airport commission has the operating patrol of the airport, just to be clear. Not the. Sorry, who owns the, uh, who owns the airport was a question, so when airport say, uh. City Cedar Rapids is sponsored, ultimately, the city of Cedar Rapids. But were operated through the airport commission, so for example, I am, and the airport commission. We don't receive tax dollars from the city of Cedar Rapids, that's what I think, we make it our own.
Can you clarify, the airport commission uses their own funds to purchase? Some of the land they've obtained, Grand Office of the City of Cedar Rapids and so plus.
So, but Kathy's saying, so Kathy's our finest record, she's just referencing that. The land, when it's purchased, is purchased through airport commission funds. In essence, or there's green progress in. I think going back to, yeah.
Has the airport started acquiring more ground for that to extend that runway yet?
Uh, the question was, has the airport requires more ground to extend that runway, when you say that runway, the third runway in the future, uh, we have not. So we have the land, um, um, largely replaced, there are, there are additional. Uh, lands of the interest around the airport, but we haven't started acquiring, acquiring additional for the purpose of other room.
Yeah, if the power plant were to go up, why not just build it to the south, why would you build it closer to residential areas, commercial, instead of further south where there's nothing?
So, um. We don't buy, we don't own the land to the south, so, the process and planning process that's gone in place. For a very long time, airport rail plans with FAA, the airspace protections that have gone in place that go back to. Um, actually nineteen ninety six. Uh, communities around to uh the airport, to include Fairfax. Past the existing zoning ordinance, so, uh, which included, it was ninety six, ninety seven, which included a. What we call the airport influence map. Is generally what it's called, but that's a map that shows the airspace. Uh, shows the third runway, shows different uh makeups of that airspace. Uh, and that was attached to those zoning ordinance, that was in nineteen ninety six. And the map, yeah, that ninety six, ninety seven, so that map has been altered with all the communities, I think the challenge. That's really hurt for all of us, is, as time has gone on. You lose that institutional knowledge, um. And so, unfortunately, some of that has been. Either forgotten, not recalled, it's happened, not just. It happens with a lot of the cities, so, um, one comment that was made, you know, the third runway felt like it was a surprise. I agree, I I think the airport, we need to do a better job talking about it, uh, than we have, to be honest. But I think it's important to also know that in nineteen ninety six, it was set, the airspace was set, so all of that work. You know, it took us fifty years, so plus, well, permission verdict into the point we're at. Um, so, quickly shift that to the south is, is uh. You know, my, it's my.
Why would they call it quickly, you said, no, I've not needed for thirty years, I don't see how that's be defined as quickly. And I understand you've had a fifty year idea. Of putting a runway closer to people as opposed to farther away, but that's not my fault for bad planning. I'm not beholden to something that would come up within the years ago, and again, if you might not need it for thirty years, I don't understand why that would impede you from. Doing something to the south as opposed to destroying any chance of Fairfax developing the south part of our problem. Do you ever flown into LAX, Chicago? Orange County, any anywhere in the United States, these runways, but uh to rest today. So I, I think you guys maybe ought to get free and check it out.
Yeah, I used to jump on planes that are near your smart ass down, it sounds bad, so.
I have a question, Marty. I mean, I have heard of those platters from the the pilots, but it was a concern today with. Air patterns, we're not talking a future runway, we're talking today with the planes are coming in and out with that location.
So, so the comment was, the letters I've received have concerns with the existing layout of the airfield. And the potential location, uh, in terms of our our plan, that's accurate, yes.
That's where we're gonna stay a problem.
Regarding the noise runs on a competitive word. The short haul cargo is significantly measurable as electric claims, if it's on there, is, is Cedar Rapids seeing that yet? What's your expectation for the future?
So the question was, uh, are we seeing the impact sort of of activity? Of short haul cargo, and what is our expectations, um? Yeah, so great question, um, and the impacts or potentials of electrical aircraft, um, very much an emerging. On the electrical aircraft industry, um, very much emerging. A lot of the emphasis today has been on what's known as EV toll, which is largely electric vertical pickup and landing. Um, think of it as, uh, you know, the target market to be land in LA. Um, jumping an EV toll, go downtown, land H A R K, jump an EV toll, go down to New York, so. That product probably not, uh, in our. I guess my horizon that I can, wouldn't put it in the twenty year. Um. We are in conversations with uh the state Bureau of Aeronautics to look at playing a role. Just like automobiles, where you have charging stations, that we would be interested in being potentially on that. Um, airway, for lack of a better term, for electric aircraft, so that we may be. Some of the first in the state to see that, but again, that would be speculative for me to say. That's gonna happen anytime soon, but it is something that we're planning. Um, I've had all of one conversation with the state bureau on that. So, just getting more conversation, so that's been rapidly developed, you know.
Was a more difficult than Fairfax, you would have helped the airport commission understand who the hell we are and what we're gonna do.
Yeah, so.
Because they obviously didn't look at us when they were.
Well, and I appreciate the conversation, so what is the airport gonna do?
What can we do to make you understand to stay the hell out of our way?
Yeah, well, I think, so, how do, how do we stay, how does the Fairfax, how do we cohabitate? Um, I think that's a great uh question, I think there's a lot of uh collaboration that.
Cause I remember, I don't remember Chris, this Chris is in there. Years ago, Chris and I went to a meeting, and there was supposed to be two representatives on the board out there. And. I don't know that we ever had.
I don't, when you say two representatives, something commission from Fairfax.
No, on the zoning board or whatever, they tell this room, make a thirty.
Oh, I've, I've, in my eleven years here, we've never had a zoning permission meeting.
Yeah.
Any airport, so.
Yeah, what in the hell was that, remember? Oh, here was. Probably seventeen, nineteen, seventeen, nineteen, something like that.
I would, I would reiterate, and and I.
Well, I mean, just what can we do, because we're gonna do what we're gonna do, and you're gonna do what you're gonna do, we don't need to get any feathered away, but. We're still gonna do what we're gonna do, so I mean, it's just.
Yeah, I think that's, uh. So how do we stay out of each other's way, I think, uh, we're in a situation where we have, uh. I think a fair amount of growing needs and that tremendous pressure for growth that's been around the airport. For property development, uh, which is fantastic for all of us, um. So, we certainly have never said, we don't want the power plant in Fairfax, we just said. We have concerns with this location, um, so, I think. You know, at the heart of that is, is really about community collaboration. And in nineteen ninety six.
I thought it was started then.
We start it right now.
Then. You can talk to join and get to make a pair of.
Yeah, the master plans on, on the website. Certainly happy to communicate as far as, you know, runway development, all of that. Uh, any future third runway would take a lot of work with FAA, a lot of collaboration.
I hope you, how do we get our future growth plans to your company?
We have now.
You have now, okay, good.
Yeah.
I have a question, um, how, how is having a power plant there affect the runway, is the airplane right now?
Yeah, and I think that was best summarized in the letters that the pilots themselves gave. I think the biggest concern the airport had was, um, the height. Of of the towers, the location, and in terms of private, private semi, the runway and the approach, thank you here, um. So those were some of the concerns, those were some of the concerns, um, it's, it's accurate, the boom studies, um, are kind of a new. Um, challenge for the industry, if you will, so, I, I wish there was. You know, better products, the FAA refers to a V T A R uh study, that a lot of folks rely on, but, um. You know, the the pilots themselves that made it, and some of the large employers, I think, you know, said it best.
I have a clarifying question, I've spoken to Pam, I know who works under you, and she said that it would probably only be one if you have no timeline. And then it would be private, small aviation, and like he was, Tom was talking about, like these large cargo plants. Something like that, would that be similar to Iowa City, like by that, Billy and Otto, it's just a small, not true. Or a way with these small aviation, it would not be large, would have the huge sound, so you would have them all these.
Just for clarification, I'm, yeah, and I. I just, when it was originally placed into the master plan in the nineties, it was, uh, designated. Uh, designated in, in the planning process of a general aviation runway, but we could pivot to whatever the.
Yeah, the, what's in the master plan is a runway length of seventy four hundred feet, which could accommodate commercial cargo, so. Those whole fleet makes this, you know, to include general aviation, there was a point in time. Uh, previous airport director that looked at building that runway just with pure port, um, cash, if you will. Um, and that would have been the general aviation kind of size or scale, but. Previous airport director, the plan is, is, in the master plans that I've known, it's, it's been at seventy four hundred feet, so that would be able to accommodate larger.
Thank you.
Any, any, as time goes, how many, um, people, they are more employees altogether with all of this, it's funny.
Yeah, great question, so how many employees does the airport have in total? Uh, so we did an economic impact study some years ago now, to be honest. Total employment, this includes direct, indirect induced, so it was estimated at five thousand. Uh, or half a billion dollars of annual economic impact to the region on an annual basis. Direct employment, I would have to get back to you, but I believe the number was over a thousand.
Yeah, with all the different businesses that are located.
Yeah, and some of our cargo carriers alone, between FedEx, and when you look at FedEx, I think just FedEx U P S. You know, you're, you're roughly a hundred or a little over a hundred employees just for each of those.
So a lot more than twenty five.
Yeah, that's.
Thank you. I have a question, please. Your plan for this new third runway, what would be the basis for the turning? Or landing or final approach, would it be a left base or a right base?
Yeah, that's in your traffic, I don't control the airspace, I can't. They, they could turn left, they could turn right, I can't.
If it's left base, you'd be having approach run right over your top of your existing runway, turn left. If to land, if you're going to land on nine. It's two seven, you would be left base, you'd be running right over Fairfax, top Fairfax, turn left. Your right base, you're still coming over Fairfax. Maybe.
Yeah, I would encourage you to call it runway, step anywhere.
About the kind of a win.
That's, that your traffic will sort that out.
I know, I got, I require a slide since it, Alex, I think, started Peter, we recommend the bigger gap, so.
I would tell you most, particularly aircraft, you know. I don't instrument plane, but let's just, virtual aircraft, they're being vector into the runway. Oh, so they, they generally are, you know, five mile finals or, or longer, so they're not flying. Traditional traffic patterns like you're talking about, so depends on the aircraft, depends on the scenario, and again, it'll come down. Do it, a day to day decision with their traffic to keep everybody safe.
Love to come right over our neighborhood and their, their, lots, a lot of them are below half an altitude when they're coming over the, the water tower. When the rest running or the planning on one degree, sorry.
So my last question I have is, under the scenario of. A power plant going in this location, C-Rap is airport, it's business as usual and nothing changes. Is there, is the pilots that made some comments? Made some emails or whatever you sent at our last meeting, but it doesn't, doesn't affect that where I'm moving.
Oh, I, yeah, so, all I was suggesting on the, the letters that pilots said are sent. Um, was that their, their, I think, view reflects well on the concerns.
So, so it's really pilots, it's not so much from the C-Rap's airport or that.
And the airport has concerns because our constituents have.
Sure, right, 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 but then. Business doesn't change, C-Rap's airport business doesn't change under a scenario that the power plant goes at this.
The airport will be negatively impacted.
Will it's negative because of what the pilots say? Or, that's my question.
So we're in the process as we speak to, um, get the evaluation back from third party. We were, we, we found out about the power plant in June. It was our understanding in October was going to go to the commission for a decision by the utilities commission with the state, so. Um, we were in a position, you know, we had, we felt like we had to react very quickly. And so that's what we did, as part of that, we also got a third party expert. To take a look at specifics about this location, um, in the airport development plan. Hurrying for heights, the plumes, the things, so we're waiting on those results. Um, we got some additional data from the line to help us with that, so that's in process. So we're getting a benefit for it.
Sorry, that third party expert, was he given information on the non-close loop? Cooling system of the data center that will be producing much more fog and equipment thermal uplift of the power plant?
They are also reviewing.
Are they gonna break out the, this East West runway, are they gonna include the future East West runway?
They will. Yes, sorry, uh, what would it differentiate between the two runways? They're gonna look at the airport, uh, from the master plan and airport layout plan. Uh, that's been accepted by the FAA, so they're gonna look at the existing conditions in the third runway as well, so they will take a, um. Accomplished a review.
We can see that, that vehicle, what comes out, yeah, went here, yes, on when you would see that couple.
Uh, I think it might be the week.
Oh, okay.
Um, yeah.
Hi, hi. I heard you said that they were looking at other spots, so I'm not sure if I.
Well, the study's underway, but yeah, they're coming, they're, we're looking at another spot, so. I, I. It's a lot of work for.
A work for the airport.
Anything else, Paulson?
Lastly, last month I asked for a letter sharing your similar objections to the closed, or to the, uh, power plant that you submitted one to C-Rap as your objection to be. Industrial part, uh, we never received that letter, do you still have, you still looking for accountability of that?
Yeah, we, we don't have that letter, so my, my apologies on, uh, that, what I was trying to articulate is essentially. Um, we review projects like this, uh, when we're made aware in the same manner, so, uh, we have not. I don't have that, there's no letter like that that exists.
Anything else, Council? I.
So, normally, we're looking at, so far, what does that compare to the existing ones?
Existing one is, uh, just over a hand of us.
Uh, looking at your, your map there, it's, uh, really just one up there, you have to slide over a little bit. Where you're talking about size of third runway, you would actually have closer to A D M sub stacks than you would to our plan, or vice.
Yeah, and A D M, uh, we do have challenges at certain times of the year, particularly in winter, when we will be locked in and shut down. In fact, we'll have icing operations at the airport and, and just. Uh, wait with the ice for roughly eight dollars a gallon. Eight dollars, eight dollars a gallon, um, so when we treat the runway one time, it's, it's about eight thousand dollar decision. Um, so we do have impacts, um, from that, uh, we certainly don't wanna grow those impacts. Cause that, that paper will ice stuff up.
Right, just saying. We're, we're talking about the, the power plant, it's very, 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 it would actually be closer to. For, definitely very concerned with the E D M stats, the E D M class, or the.
Again, that'll have to be part of the consideration when we start looking at doing this.
Anything else? Thank you, Martin. Okay, now, we're gonna move on to item number eight, which is the public hearing. Regarding, uh, proposed amendment to, uh, heading industrial zoning code. How this is gonna work is we're going to open the public hearing. And we'll start with a description of what the proposed change actually gives. Council then have an opportunity to ask questions about the proposed change. And then we'll open it up for public comments. So, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Um, is there someone complaining and zoning that's trying to explain the proposed change or who's gonna speak to that?
I can touch on it for, for what I know.
I thought I saw some kind of zoning. I'm gonna point out, so exactly what this does and doesn't fit.
Uh, Chuck Christensen, planning and zoning chair, um, you make that more interesting.
Yeah.
So essentially what this does, it presents the option. To, uh, have a power plant as an exception in heavy industrial. Doesn't do anything more than that, doesn't say. You know, it can, it can be here no matter what, um, it just creates the opportunity for us to discuss it further. I don't know. We still have to go through, uh, P and Z, um, board adjustments, uh, decent council. Um, still being a site plan, um, so there's many steps. That would need to happen before this, we can come to a position. And G O Z, I've been working on this for probably the last three months or so. Um, came to unanimous, unanimous decision that, um. You should at least have the opportunity to discuss this further and present as an option or an opportunity for us to.
Now, could you expand a little bit on the involvement of the board of adjustment when it's listed as a special exception only?
So, when it's a special exception, um. You know, when it goes to your P and Z, uh, it would also have to relate to the board of adjustments. Um, that would also have to pass through them as well, since it is an exception. Um, that is what that board does in current exceptions, um, so that's how that process would work.
Would that happen before it came to council or reverse?
Maybe that would be correct.
Yeah, so, if you were going to pick a piece of property to cite this. It would probably have to start with a rezoning request from the property owner. That would go to the planning and zoning commission, they are recommending, so they would recommend or not recommend. Then the rezoning action would come to the council. Then if that was approved, then again, the property owner would apply. For a, um, submit a site plan, you know, let's say for a power plant, um. And they, uh, the building official would look at the, the code. And say, well, this is allowed in industrial, but only as a special exception. So then they would set up a meeting with the board of adjustment to determine whether. That particular site plan and location could be approved for the special except, exception. So the board of adjustment would have the plan, so. Yeah, if the city wanted to, um, challenge the board of adjustments decision, it goes to district court. Their decision or that topic does not come back to council. Does Council have any questions for Jeff on? What's being considered here?
I don't have any questions for Jeff, but I do have the questions for people in the audience, and I'll try and do this quickly. By show of hands. Who is here because they're concerned about noise levels from the plant? And if you're repeating something from when I was not here earlier, I apologize, noise level. Who's concerned by show of hands that they think it's gonna smell like ass? There's one person. Lastly, who's concerned more about, um, fire levels from the staffs? And lastly, who's concerned that they just think it'll look ugly as hell?
What about a pale floor?
Yeah, I, I mean.
Uh, I got bad news for you, A D M's right down the road, that smell of ass in the air.
We don't have a lot of more, huh? We don't have a lot more.
Why, and it messes.
You don't think A D M smells?
No, the power plant.
I, I was there, I was on the first group, uh, there was no smoke and noise, I couldn't hear anything from the.
It was.
Okay, um, so Jeff, thank you, I don't think we have any further question about the procedure here. We're gonna open up for public comments, have we, did we receive any public comments that are not in the packet? In advance of the public.
Um, some questions, but any documents, um, are in the packet?
Okay, so on the show of hands, how many people would like to comment? Right, please. A couple? Okay. Let you decide who goes first, you have a seven minute limit, please.
Hey.
And please tell us who you are.
My name's Tori Longyear Lewis, and I live at ninety one ten Maple Grove Road. And I am writing today, and I, and I'm not a public speaker, so I wrote this down ahead of time. Um, I'm writing today in opposition to the proposed power plant in the Fairfax community. I, along with many others, strongly oppose any zoning ordinance change that would allow power plants for heavy industrial structures. I would like to begin by asking why our current ordinance does not allow power plants, and then here why those reasons seemingly no longer apply today. My main concerns are with the health and well-being of our community. A power plant would be detrimental to the aesthetics, cleanliness, and safety of our city. As you consider the exception proposal that can pave the way for a power plant near Old Fairfax, a close residential area. I urge you to take a step back and ask, have we done enough to understand the risk? Have we, um, requested an independent health impact assessment, and have we truly listened to the people who live, work, and raise families here? And I'm the one who attached the seventy six page, uh, report by Stanford Law School that was published in March of twenty twenty five in response to a similar proposal. In Wisconsin, which did not go through based on concerns. While I don't expect every council member to read the entire report, I believe such a decision warrants thorough review of this kind of material. Here are a few key findings from the report. Expensive literature highlights that while natural gas power plants are often considered cleaner alternatives to coal. They still contribute significantly to adverse health outcomes in nearby communities. Emissions from natural gas plants, including nitrogen oxide, fine particulate matter, and volatile organic. Compounds can lead to respiratory and cardiovascular diseases, increased cancer risk, and adverse maternal and infant health outcomes. These emissions are associated with increased risk of stroke, heart attack, hypertension, and even premature death. Children are especially vulnerable, and these are not abstract concerns. We know from Marshalltown Power Plant's own emissions data, one point six million metric tons per year of carbon dioxide. This is equivalent to the emissions of more than three hundred and fifty thousand cars. Sixty seven plus tons per year of nitrogen oxide known to trigger asthma and respiratory distress. More than eight tons per year of sulfur dioxide, a major contributor to acid rain and environmental damage. Methane and nitrous oxide, both potent greenhouse gases. According to the EPA, these emissions travel far beyond the source. They contribute to acid rain, road buildings, pollute waterways, and increase the risk of heart and lung disease. The proposed plant site is approximately a quarter mile from our sports complex where children play. Is within walking distance of homes, trails, businesses, parks, and farmlands. A two mile radius around the proposed site covers most of the city of Fairfax. I ask you, do you want this facility in your backyard? Do you want it near your kids or your pets? Over Labor Day weekend, my family and I drove to see the Marshalltown plant ourselves. What we found was not a pristine flower field setting, it was a massive industrial facility with loud mechanical noises. I don't know why people are saying they didn't hear anything, it was this high pitched, loud, humming, constant sound, it was terrible. Um, and it was disturbing, and overhead, we saw nearly twenty vultures circling the plant. And vultures are attracted to rising currents of warm air and the smell of death, and they were, they were way up there, so you know that current was way up. If you can't see it, it might be, you might not see the plume, but it's there, and the evidence of it was. With all the vultures just circling and circling, like eighteen when we counted. Um, I spent the last two weekends with my friends and family, walking the streets of Fairfax and speaking to neighbors. Over four hundred have signed a petition in opposition, and I will be sharing this with you guys tonight. Um, these are people who live, work, or own homes in the community, and many were unaware that the proposal was even on the table. Those who did know are firmly opposed, at least who I've talked to. Um, here's what they are saying. They've already stolen our night with the lights, we're moving if that thing goes in, multiple people said they would move if that thing went in. Um, we already have an airport, I can't take that over a power plant. They're changing the landscape of our city, I can't stand to drive down Seventy-Sixth Avenue anymore. Thank you for doing this, good luck, good luck to all of us, and we've lost the soul of Fairfax. We've heard arguments that this development is about long-term economic growth. Or a future runway that's maybe twenty-five years away. But our health, our air, our safety, and our peace of mind are on the line now. So I respectfully ask, have you spoken directly with your constituents about this? Have you heard any support for this proposal from residents, aside from those vested interests? Are you presuming to know what the people want in moving forward with those plans without even hearing from them? And you believe a community pool is desirable in the city? But if Timmy on Third Street and Sally on Front Street are diagnosed with asthma, do you think their parents will feel it was a fair trade-off? City Administrator Mr. Philip recently wrote in the Fairfax fax that the people of Fairfax should decide what's best for Fairfax, and I agree. And I'm here to tell you that we are saying no. Will you listen? Because by definition, your job is to represent and serve the residents first. And I have. Um, and I remain serious, assigned.
Overwhelmingly, the people are saying no. Thank you.
Alright, so now, want to speak and talk?
Hi, my name is Rita Nyerling, and I live at five fifteen Front Street. Uh, I just wanna thanks, thank everyone for listening. We live in a clean town with water and utilities, I love Fairfax, I've lived here for over thirty years, and I'm a very happy resident. Our community is really great. People moved to Fairfax to be away from the city. We have a small town feel, in fact, it's called home sweet home. It's clean, and we enjoy being close to the city, but we're not in the city. My goal today is to encourage the council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. And the Board of Adjustments to not allow a line to build a power generating station in the city of Fairfax limits. They can build elsewhere, um, the representative told us today they have flexibility. There are other opportunities for the land. There's a reason why it was on white industrial to begin with, there's no reason to make an exception for a power plant. The special election to vote on the exemption for a power plant would hurt our health, our safety, and our mind. We can move this site further down to Seventy-Sixth or closer to A D M, where they already have large towers. Some of my concerns, and I also want on the streets of Fairfax, I don't have to convince any. People sign a petition, because I didn't have time, but I'd have about fifty signatures to add to her four hundred, so. That's all right.
One hundred and twenty-six.
My biggest concern are, is about the environment, the dangerous emissions, and you guys, we know that exists, I teach second grade, and our whole. Uh, curriculum focuses on the environment, so I preach this stuff, and here it's actually happening in our community, where our, my students live. And, and it's gonna affect all of us. Uh, there could be a possible explosion, like this is natural gas, does our fire force have enough units to, you know? Take care of something like that? It is a quarter of a mile to the sports complex, you guys, I love the sports complex. I walk my dog there, we have hundreds of people that come and enjoy it, they compliment Fairfax. Because our sports complex, now we're gonna be able to throw stones and hit a power plant right there, I mean, that's scary business. Also, the resale value of our homes has just gone down if we have a proper plant. Um, we're not gonna be able to compete with Wolford, Ely, Shewa Bill, Spusher, all of those other uh, towns that are our size. The height of the towers, that's just, it's an eyesore, no one wants to look at that. Now, it's fine, if you live over here, you can't see it, I live in the old part, and I consider it a great part of Fairfax. And I would be able to see it out my back door, I don't wanna see that, that's not why I moved to Fairfax. Um, the airport, I did talk to Pan Heimann, and I did talk about some of the runway stuff, I was, um, I don't think any of us know what's going to happen. No one can predict the future, but they said they had no timeline. Um, and there's a lot of things that they have to okay, like the local and F A A have to be involved to uh. Permit something like that to happen. Also, just the noise pollution, pollution, I know we live by a train, and we live by airplanes, but why add to that? It's a visual eyesore, we're gonna lose that small town feeling. No one wants to live next to industry, and I, a lot of people are already really concerned about the data centers, I know we can't stop that, it's already in motion. But we can stop this. Um, uh, everyone told me they don't wanna live by a power plant, one person said that the council is losing sight. Of what the city of Fairfax wants and stands for. Another person said that we are buppies in the data center and the power plant and aligning our, the shards, like they don't care about us. We want to keep Fairfax our home sweet home. I urge the council to not approve an exemption for the power plant and listen to the citizens of Fairfax, or at least maybe delay the vote, I don't know what the hurry is. Um, and maybe let the, the community speak, or go out and talk to the community. Cause I guess my question to you guys is, have you actually talked to the community about what they want? Cause I think we're seeing revenue dollars, eleven thousand dollars versus one point six million. What, what are we gonna do with that money? Like, no one wants a swimming pool if we don't have anything to agree them. And I don't think any of us wanna live in a massive community either. So I just don't know what your guys' plans are, or what you're thinking, have you guys talked to the constituents of Fairfax? Or, I'm just asking anybody then. And they're in favor of it?
I think. I think from the people that I've talked to, I would guess I've talked to very naive people, plus or minus. People don't have information, a lot of people that I've spoken with have an opinion. But once you speak with them on the information, now all of a sudden, things start grinding, right? Well, okay, well now this, well this, well this, I still don't have all the information, but up until tonight. Most everybody that showed up, and I'm glad you guys showed up. You guys now have knowledge, probably eighty percent more of what you did before you came in, that's not anybody's fault. But now we can all sit and think about this some more, that is the biggest thing, Rita, that I had found. No one really knows. In this day and age, people like to read two sentences, and, and we all, I'm saying we all think we know the whole topic. We got two big topics here, right? So before we really make a decision on what your decisions are, we, I'm a resident too, right? Get all the information, look at pluses and minuses, right? And I think these guys all did a great job of presenting that today to get more information, so that's what I heard from the people that I've talked to so far.
Is there benefit in your mind besides the tax money? Is there, is there another reason why you would?
I've not said anything about we need to do this because of the tax money.
So what is the benefit that you need me for?
I've not even gotten to that point, I need more information, that once this is all done, I have a few things that I would like to see first, before I can figure out. Some of the things to consider, I've received feedback, some negative, some positive. One of the positives that I've heard from people is by building it here, we can help control how it's built. Rita, you mentioned it, I don't think you're being literal, that they can just go build it down closer to A D M. And if you do have serious concerns about the pollutants coming out of that stacks, how does a half mile down the road somehow eliminate those pollutants?
We're adding to it.
I, I'm saying, I, I'm saying, I'm saying, if, if we build it outside of the Fairfax community somewhere in this vicinity, and I'm not pretending to know what alternative sites are. And if your concern is um, the look, or more importantly, the pollutants. If those pollutants are serious enough that you don't wanna build, building it a half mile to the east isn't going to eliminate them. But it does eliminate one point six million dollars in revenue, if someone asked, I think it was Connie said, is that a motivating factor? Yes, cause what is that bill? That funds a full-time fire department down, because we almost banked it, he's trying to retire, we keep him chained down.
We're the old.
No. That, now I'm not saying we're anywhere close to a police department, I don't think we need a police department, I don't think when we had consultants in way back, they said a police department isn't really needed until you get to about ten thousand. That funds police. That funds additional baseball fields, that uh, there's a lot of planning long-term for the park. Now, I know the, the concern, the counterpoint is, well, now you have. A uh, power plant. What is it, six tenths of a mile away? Do you wanna send kids down there playing there? If you build.
I don't know.
But again, the question is. Again, I know one, oh, I'm sorry, you said, there was no vultures when I said, I was standing on the picture of the tower, I was standing outside that door. They do have problems with birds, because they put up the same plastic hours that I put up in my yard.
But they get a high, vultures actually get a high, and that's why.
I'm just saying, I didn't see it when I was there, I'm not saying that people, I'm just saying, I didn't see some giant swarm of birds looking for, you know, to sniff nothing. And then, and then again, the things to consider is. Not a closed loop system for one of the data. You're gonna have small or fog from that, than you will. Again, that doesn't mean we should build a power plant, just because, you know. The data center is emitting fog, but you're now, you're not gonna eliminate. Now again, I know some people said, why add to? I get that.
Well, thank you for listening, and I just really encourage you to think about it, maybe delay the vote, get more information.
And part of this is just moving the process forward, again, this is not setting anything in stone, there, there's three readings on this. And sometimes we skip the readings, I would advise doing that, so you would have your first vote, next one you'd have another vote. Get more feedback, more information, then a final passage is wanted after that, so this is its sentence stuff. And again, changing the zoning doesn't. Lock in a power plant being built, it just allows, one of the jokes, and I know most people don't come to meetings because it's. Makes your eyes blue. People who watch this on YouTube are bastards, but anyway. It's in, we joke that ordinances are forever in perpetu- in perpetuity until we change our minds, just because we agree to do it tonight. Doesn't lock us into it, the path, commit us to building the power plant, it doesn't mean after it is passed, we don't go back immediately. That was something Mary and I, Mary Anne and I talked about, I can't remember if it was a month ago or longer. Not that power plants build on top of each other, but the concern is, what if someone else comes and wants to build a power plant? It's not like after this was built, we couldn't immediately turn around and change the ordinance preventing these special exceptions, and a line would be brand powered in, of station. So it's not as permanent as it might seem to be some.
I have a question, why do we not have?
Kathy Kraut, I live at seven thirty-four Church Street. I guess I just want to know why we don't have that map, why, um, we don't have a, a dust ordinance? We do have a noise ordinance? I mean, it's kind of hit or miss, what controls do we have?
We don't have a noise ordinance either.
Because some things you don't anticipate further down the road, we also don't have an ordinance to bury dead horses in the yard, does that happen? Cause no one thought there was gonna be dead horses being buried in yards, but it happened. The same reason for that, we don't. Plans change, you know, um, Bernie, when he was mayor, he had a walking trail uh, grant money, and then it turned out to be a road to nowhere, and we didn't do it. Things develop and change over time. So that's what we do.
Mike, if you look at that, the other end is already done.
No.
Cedar Rapids end is.
Okay.
The, the point being, ordinance has changed over time, and we adapt. That's where I said they're not permanent, like zoning is.
To those of us that, that don't want it, and maybe we aren't informed enough. It's concerning to see that we've asked for a dust ordinance, at least at my husband's house. We don't have to have, we don't have the special need or vote for that. You know, I think we found very clearly that the majority of the citizens are totally informed. And as you're walking out and talking to these neighbors, that's concerning to us. And it, it magnifies the feeling that. We're being taken advantage of, or something's being pushed under the rug for us.
All these meetings are on YouTube and free to watch, and whether or not people do it, it's up to them, I can't force people to watch them. I can't force people to come here and listen to us talk.
Can I just interject something? I don't know of another community in Iowa. That mails a monthly newsletter to every Fairfax address with every minutes from every public board. Mail to everyone's home every month. I don't know of another city that doesn't, I don't think anybody come up with another city that doesn't, and our packets are all. Board of Adjustment, Planning, and Zoning Council, all those packets are online, available to the public. And like Mike said, our meeting, our council meetings are filmed, and we even went to the set to film our one uh, P and Z meeting. And place that on there, I, I truly think that Fairfax is very committed to getting our information out. But we cannot make people read the newsletter, or watch the videos, or come to a meeting, but we are doing everything we can to push the information out.
Kathy, would you have a suggestion on how to potentially hurt your patient?
Oh, well. Maybe just some more meetings to let people come and hear it. I mean, you get a different perception when you hear than when you read. I know from, well, take Mary Pappin and Mrs. Lewis. You know, they're probably not gonna read the newsletter, hard to cover.
A serious answer is, we don't need more meetings, it's on YouTube, you can watch it while you're on the job. You know, you can watch it anywhere, you can watch it anytime, twenty-four hours a day.
Well, I think those of us are here saying we really don't want it.
Want what, more information?
We don't want.
You're, you're asking me how to get out information, I'm, I'm, that's what I'm gonna ask for, I understand your objection to that. So, so you can go to the city website, and you can click the council, is it council board?
I know, I know, I just see it, but I'm seeing there's a lot of people that don't. And a lot of those people that have lived in Fairfax for years.
And Joanne is asking, how can we get that information out to people so you can see it, I mean. Social media, it's, it's out there, it's mailed. And I think it's a great question. What other way, and maybe you don't have an answer now, but maybe you do down the road. Get back to Joanne and share it with us, if there's some way that we can. Get that information out, because it's all posted all the time, every board, every committee, look at the calendar, you can see it, maybe your neighbors don't know. And then show it to them, hey, you can do this and this and this. Technology is intimidating, right? Things for a lot of people, they see it once, now they got it.
Kathy, one of the small thought we mentioned, dust ordinance, the noise ordinance, it says. Do the ordinance just start with a type of agility commission? So if, if you have a, a request to add something like that, or to start a back commission, ask it on their agenda.
They don't trust, they just deal with zoning. They don't deal with it. I've been, I've never, they only do zoning, so. Kathy.
I, I understand, and Marshalltown, so.
Well, yeah, they have water problem in Marshalltown.
I don't think that's.
The big thing is not the water.
I still think the consensus is, if you would listen to. When, when you guys were talking about what Cedar Rapids needs, what the council needs, whatever, nobody really said what the constituents need and want. So I just hopefully, listening to this, and at least. Let everybody get more information, I'll do my best to try and get other people, I mean, we, we spoke with a lot of people in the last two weekends. And it's. And it's even people that I just read the facts from cover to cover, but they had concerns and questions that we couldn't answer. So instead of pushing it and making it look like it's opening a door that we don't want to see open. If you could at least. Wait a month or two months or whatever, I don't think there's a real rush. To have the ordinance changed.
There's three readings, and they're reading the late three months, but more or less drag over three months.
There's nothing out about this.
And we would feel better if you just waited till next month before you.
You have to pass three readings, which would take three months, to battery this month, the next month, the next one. There's now the time.
Yeah, we're still saying no. All right, thank you.
One representative, when did the city find out? About this?
They came to vote July. They they mess with some staff and chief, and the chores.
And the question was, when did the city or city council know when this was being proposed thing, and when, if at all, did you let the residents know it was coming?
So initial meeting was with um eleven to number of staff in June. And then Alliance came to the planning building commission in July. And so it was public at that point, there's a light.
It was on their agenda and their minutes were in the facts.
Right. So it was public July. The meeting is not. Okay, so.
Why is it being voted on this quickly, then, if something's been in the books for?
Oh, we'll talk about that just in just a second, let's finish with public comments, and then I'll explain how these three readings, wait, you.
Hey, Cindy Anderson, I am a Fairfax resident. I believe currently Fairfax does not have any heavily, heavy industrial districts. I believe there's a reason for that. That historically, that was not something that our community wanted or needed. To make it a special exception requires whoever gets that special exception, they come to the board of assessment. And they will make a decision one way or the other. I am asking and wanting to know, how many of you? When you heard about this in June? When they talked to your neighbors? Or even people you didn't know? And get their opinion on whether or not our small town. Home sweet home. Wanted it. I guess. That we may need. Some financial. Things. Do I believe that we're gonna get one point six million dollars in that? I don't change.
Why do you think that?
I don't believe that. I still am waiting for the economic benefit of the Travarum. That we let.
From what?
From the Travarum, I don't, I don't know what our economic benefit was from that. From what I understand, when you allow a company or a big business to come in like that, you give them a tax deferred.
We did not.
Did. But it can happen. Correct?
They're not asking for anything, and my decision is I don't ever give benefits to it, you know, you've come to meetings. The city love you here is fifty percent of what Cedar Rapids, that's your taxpayer.
Thank you. I would oppose. Adding a special exception to the ordinance for heavy industrial. Should I impose any heavy industrial? Districts. I also have talked to a lot of people. And they are concerned about our small town, our small town feel, our small town, what we want to do. I just encourage all of you to. Not let that. One point six million dollars or whatever the number's gonna be. Got it. And be your only basis. For allowing something like that here. And I encourage you. You don't discount. Us. We have talk, we have going now. And ultimately, at the end of the day. You guys. Are responsible for us. And how our community develops. By necessity, take some of those things, the things that were said to hurt. And not let dollar signs be the only kind. Principle. I've had to look forward.
Okay, hearing no further comments, I am going to. Close the public hearing. And we will. Move on. Unless council has any further discussion, you know. Be good.
Further discussion. On the ordinance.
We haven't reached the point of talking about the ordinance though. So we're gonna move on to item number nine. Which is to consider. Introduce and consider the first reading of the proposed ordinance change. How this works, public, if you haven't been through this process before, when we change an ordinance, it does require. Three readings unless the council votes to waive. Second and third reading, or potentially just the third reading takes at their option. So tonight, all that. Could be voted on is the very first reading. To approve this change. And then the council will determine. Whether they want to move forward and waive the additional one, so I'm hearing, I'm sure the council is probably not. To go on, which would mean then, second reading, whatever the outcome is, would not occur until the next conference. And then they decide whether they want to do the second and third reading at that council meeting. Or whether they also want to hold phone for third reading, which would be another month. Or two months. It wouldn't be officially, potentially for. Two more months.
And if it was defeated. Tonight, it wouldn't move forward to a second, you said no matter the outcome.
Right, if if they defeated it tonight, it's not that they could, the the winning side. Pass the next one.
Right, but that's what.
Yeah, that's now, that's.
So, what the council is considering now. Is. Someone making a motion to approve the proposed change to the heavy industrial. Filing ordinance to allow. Heart plans as a special exception, they add ordinance as a special exception, so. Need a council member to make that motion if they're interested.
But I think we need to have some comments on ourselves also before the repeal motion, right?
Or if you that, uh, you didn't say then.
That's why I asked, I thought, yeah.
We were closing a public comment.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Tom.
No, go ahead, please.
You go first.
Somebody go.
John was excited before.
I think what Tori brought to it, this letter, and I tried to read through the Stanford. Uh, information, it it raises some questions, and I'm, thank you for for putting that on there. I think it's worth looking into more, first of all, what was their proposal, what does that imply? Compared to what is this plan that Alliance is proposing, and what is the difference, this is, from my understanding, this is totally new technology, so what is the difference? What, because that is a concern of mine, of what is this gonna put into the air, right, we might be comparing apples to oranges, we might not be. But I think that's worth looking into, and then to find out from that, that mayor. Of superior, um, why he changed his mind, that was on that page. Page twenty one on there. What happened, you know, and why was that, I think that's information for us to have, if this goes the next step, depend on what this first reading does. We get some more information we gather from there. That's, that's my two, my two thoughts.
So I think I'm. A little concerned, so I. Read some things online, uh, there's obviously the attached letter about property values. I know it's not factual, it's it's in an opinion, but someone, that's their career. Are there studies, I know this came up in a meeting. With a line, are there studies to? Prove otherwise that property values won't negatively be impacted? So that's. My concern is, yes, we'll, we might pull in one point six million, whatever it may be. But. To the everyday restlessness. In Washington.
Mayor, President.
I know, I want to finish. We did a tour, and honestly, it really wasn't, I I was probably getting tired. Until I did a tour, and then I came away gone, it really wasn't, it really wasn't bad. So it wasn't what I expected, but I also know that. People looked at their valuation on their homes. And I don't want to see that. But I did, so.
Further discussion, Tom?
I just think it bears repeating to the people that are here. If we vote move forward, it commits us to no. Do people understand that? That if we vote yes on the first reading, that we're committed to no. Even if we change the zone. It does not commit us to this power. No, it doesn't, again, I don't know how many more facts I can tell, you know. Well, you were just asking for more information, I'm telling you, it does not commit us to anything other than revisiting it again next month.
With more information, some of the things that I think, a couple of things that I mentioned, that's some things to gather. Right? And I think Mary Ann, you mentioned home value valuation on. That's legit. That is, to get all that stuff put together. If we go to the next. Brief second reading, if. Right, we have got that far yet, but. That's legit for all of us.
That's a silly question. So we're here voting on this. And. I'm not saying it's this person's responsibility, that person's responsibility. Why do we? Like property values, shouldn't that have been something that was presented by someone to us?
Oh, because it's subjective, how are you to say that UTS and the data center would have the exact same effect? If there was no power plant, and then how do you successfully argue that having a power plant somehow increases that devaluation? When they have two data centers, possibly, if they put a third one there?
Well, we didn't vote on the data centers.
Yeah, I can't totally.
We're not for a city that wouldn't have a potential power power plant.
And that's part of why we brag it out over three months, because those are questions you can ask Cynthia to look into. What was the affected home valuation of homes in Marshall Town long eighteen, that? Was there a dip and did it bounce back, are they permanently down? Those are questions if you have to send a Cynthia, and she.
That question, same up, in a meeting. A month ago.
Potentially.
Oh, we have one renter's opinion in your packet, a local renter. Or without numbers attached.
Chris Wright can certainly look into anything the council wants more info, uh, you know, there's lots of. You know, if you just strictly look at property values as of this year, and then of that year when they built the plant. You know, there's other economic development, was it a reassessment year or not, I mean, there's, you have to look at the full picture when you're looking at it. You know, maybe they went up, but maybe it was just because it was a reassessment year, you know. So just know. That those types of topics are very complicated and multifaceted.
But also you could look at just Marshall Town, I don't know how many. Power plants around throughout the country, but you could get a couple of. Other scenarios, right, and you can run them all together to get an idea, don't just use one as a control.
They keep building homes out of dealing, that's got a new plan, and people crap their pants over new plans. They're significantly safer than people like to think they are.
I think the issue is, why are we pushing this through, why don't we get the information one month and then have this the next month? Why it seems.
It seems backwards.
And I think the reason is that Alliance is pushing because they have a timeline that they would like to meet. So that's what you're not hearing here. Is that's why they're trying to, like, is this process alone would take three months? And then even if we approve it after three months, then it still has to go through other who were before it would even. So for them, the timeline is, e- even if in a perfect world, all this pushes through, it could be a year before. It even gets done.
Well, I think that they, they said P and Z, when they submit to the utility board their plan, which they'd like to do this fall, they need to have the site.
So that's.
That's what you're not here.
Right, I think that was last fall, or the last, at P and Z, that was this fall, but I think. The gentleman in the back that they created, you had talked about sometime this winter, early, it'd be later than this fall. It could be in the spring or something like that, at the latest, with the regulatory. Yes. Yeah, I think we'd like to be on. You like to be sooner, but it's not so much this fall, thank you for answering that, it's where it could be. It's not necessarily in the next month or two. But again. I'll reiterate, just because. If it's voted on to pass this one ordinance, doesn't mean that things aren't going to change with orders, with. With voting on it the second time and the third time. Right, it doesn't, doesn't, you need more information, but so far, we're gonna keep things moving forward, so. I can't tell you guys that, okay. Because we moved it to the next level, doesn't mean that, yes, we're, we're gonna move forward, but it. It's the process that's involved, this will be next month, if that's the case.
And you did come back. Are you guys are up for your election this coming? So I think that's important to keep in mind, if people are speaking and they're saying they don't want this, then if you just. Go forward. You should. Forward, I I want so lots of Fairfax residents to have. But I also didn't stand for the thing, you know, so I have to, I have to focus. So I, and I, I jump in here.
I guess there's a lot of it, or people would run for office, and no, I'm likely.
Okay, let's refocus back to what. We will or will not vote on at the moment. Any further council discussion?
I'm not trying to overwhelm Cynthia, city staff, but I would love to see the community. Or the people that are the most concerned, submit questions on what they want answered, I'm not saying that you're gonna change their mind. I'm not suggesting that they're gonna go from a no to a yes. But if they have legitimate concerns that can be answered, that would either alleviate their fears or reinforce them, and say, no, I don't want it, I would like to see those citizens send those questions in. And just saying, because it looks ugly. That's fine, but that's not like a real question, where it's like, what are the pollution levels, what if the? Plan is built half mile down the road, will the pollution levels change at all? What EPA standards are going to be enforced to ensure those pollution levels are at what are considered safe levels, whatever that may be? What is the fog level gonna be compared to that of the uh open system and QTS? The noise level, again, you know, I can't convince, I'm sorry, I don't remember again, I can't convince or otherwise, but. I didn't hear anything. I heard birds. I didn't hear any.
You didn't hear a sound?
No.
No. There was an absolute, I pitched. Constant sound coming out of that building.
Pretty sure you don't have.
Right there, I remember where the fence was for. Constant coming.
We stopped, we stopped at the fence on the way in and listened, and, and I was with, I can't remember.
We're presenting things we don't need to. What would you like to do, the council? What would you like to do in the council?
Uh, I'll make a motion, motion of order. Because it's either A, shut it down or have the information we need, or move forward, gather more information. Probably shut it down next month or month later.
Or not vote at all, that's a fair enough.
Or not, that's shut it down. Table. I'll take no action, although you're stating that.
Yeah, right. And when you said shut it down, I thought you meant vote no.
He means he moved, we moved forward, we do a vote tonight, if it passes, then we have the questions um, that both us as council and citizens have. And then answer those questions at the next meeting, and that's what you meant by shut it down, if those questions aren't answered or are satisfied with them. Don't report, that's what I meant, yeah.
So.
He's saying he doesn't have enough information to say yes or no.
He made a motion, he made a motion, so I could say he.
What is your motion now?
Motion for forward then.
To approve the first reading. To the proposed change. Okay, so there's motion on the floor. To approve the first reading. Second, is there a second, sorry, for second. Need a roll call, there you go. Yay.
Name, hi, hi.
So the first reading has been approved. Council, are you considering the second reading to see?
No.
Okay. So that's all we're doing tonight. So first reading, the second reading will be on our next complating agenda. With additional information.
Gathering information on that project, so the reader.
Yeah, everyone, please send, send us an email so we can get.
Just send two more hours of meetings.
Move on to item number ten. This public hearing is regarding amendment. This process will be the same as our previous public hearing, uh, open the public hearing, we'll have that. Our information adds, amendment is on. Council then ask questions in the public. So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing regarding the change to the urban renewal plan. So there, the fund of interest, yeah, okay, thank you.
So in order for the city to use tax increment financing to repay debt, the projects have to be listed in your urban renewal plan. And so this is paperwork that the bonding attorney gave us in order to pay for the fire station additions and the pickleball court project with T S, if you choose, it doesn't obligate you to, like, you don't even have the option if it's not in your urban renewal.
Um, will have any questions for Cynthia, whether this change. Tell.
Did we open the public hearing?
Are there any comments on the public regarding this change to our urban renewal plan? And Cynthia, were there any comments received prior to this meeting?
Yeah.
Ask for public engagement on urban renewal.
Right, and we always have to set up a meeting with Lynn County and the school district, and that was supposed to, like, scheduled for August night, I think. And they didn't show, they never have showed in the sixteen years at work.
Looks like Chief Science might have a comment.
Our chief. Wolford, right there. I think it's a great idea. Because I need that addition on the bar.
Comments from the public. Counsel. Any discussion before I close the public hearing?
No.
Are they carrying some photos? Move on to item number eleven, where we're considering a resolution to approve the urban renewal plan amendment.
Motion. Sorry, guys.
Roll call, please, Tom.
Hi, 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 hi. Thank you. Your fire chief appreciates.
All right. Moving on to item number twelve, discussion and possible motion concerning copier proposals, Cynthia.
Yes, just going through question point, okay. So this is about our large copier, which we purchased in August of twenty one for twenty one thousand dollars. It's currently Canon that we have with advanced business systems, as we purchased it from. Um, and we don't lease it, we just purchased it outright, and they have the service contract. So access systems, Mike, dear, and Cindy.
Yeah. You can move ahead and run.
Um, they just made a cold sales call and it was kind of well timed, because the three months before that, the, the copier works perfect during our regular copy and scan. Um, our newsletter, I think, has probably killed it, we've done four million copies in four years. And, um, even the ABS news salesman that we've got said, you know, probably, he's recommending go with Canon to move up um, in a, in the series to a heavier duty rollers, heavier duty output and that, that type of thing. But anyway, so we were having lots of trouble with it feeding the paper and the newsletter from the big bin. And they've been out numerous times and we just think it's worn out. Uh, we can copy the newsletter still using the small drawers, those are, seem to be working, but the big gin doesn't. So we got a proposal from Access for a Sharp machine that is a similar, um, similar quality of what we have now. And then a quote from ABS for a step up in a Canon. And then just today, they also sell Sharp. And so he said, they don't recommend that Sharp machine, but they could sell it to us, and they sent a, um, a proposal for that, but that's really not what they're recommending. Um, Access is in Hiawatha. ABS is in Moline, although their new salesperson is headquartered in, lives in Bowman Woods in Cedar Rapids, Super Marion. So we've had ABS for a long time. Responsive, but yet it's an hour and some minutes, you know, even if they just leave right from their, their location to get here. And when we were having all the trouble, I was kind of disappointed that they just didn't tell us the machine is tired and needs to be replaced, you know? Uh, we really had to bring up that idea. Um, but I, I will say that the salesman that we dealt with for years and years just retired in August. So it's a brand new salesperson, so it's kind of a, a shift in in, um, people that would manage our account also. Um, you'll see that the Canon step up is like twenty five thousand five eighty eight. Like I said, four years ago, lesser Canon was twenty one oh thirty eight. The access Sharp machine, um, their quote is thirteen four sixty eight. Differences in the, um, service contract, um, and ABS is suggesting a hundred and fifty two set amount a month. But we're we're always over that, we're not in, in jeopardy of, you know, not doing that number of copies and paying that for no reason. Um, but there, um, rate above that is, um, access system is quoting no minimum each month. Um, and then across the board, the same, uh, uh, it's a little bit lower than ABS per copy. ABS has given us some comparables. Um, showing that the machine that they're recommending, um, over what we have is, uh, what we have is like built for four point eight million and the one they're suggesting is six million, it has a heavy duty um, output, um, but does have the same large paper deck. Uh, let's see what else, access is also, they would need to uh, pay ABS two thousand and four dollars to buy out our maintenance contract. Anything else I should be adding? Access, um, access reps?
Uh, no, nothing, all of that is accurate and ranging.
Um, so I guess our options are we can do nothing and keep just running the uh, newsletter from the small trays, which takes Tina more time to do. But again, that machine has got four million copies made, it's, you know, doesn't have a long life. Um, we can upgrade, stay with Canon, upgrade to a more heavy duty one, or stay with the same type of grade of machines for almost half. And go with the Sharp. And I would not suggest leasing it. Uh, there's no reason for us to pay any interest or have to do a check each month. Uh, we just bought the last one outright, there's no difference in the maintenance contract. Do you lease or purchase? And you don't have to decide tonight. Like I said, we're still able to get the newsletter out.
Four million copies over four years and a half, half of the shoes don't work, the bigger ones.
The big, the bigger paper deck.
The bigger ones, so you got a problem, it's just going to get worse.
Excuse us, so the beefier machine has the same depth that wears out at four million copies?
But their rollers and everything to pick the paper up are more heavy duty. I know that, that was a concern of mine.
That's the thing that you want to make sure works.
Right, yeah, I, I said to them, I said, well, that concerns me. And he said, if we covered with the, the, but the power driver of the machine, the the motor, that everything else is beefier, and he said, you won't have the problem. I won't be here in four years, if it ends up in four years. But I will say that I think the newsletter is very important. You know, I think we have to make the commitment to have proper copier that will handle it, unless you want to start outsourcing it, which would be much more expensive.
What was the last minute, last period?
What, you mean before?
Yeah.
I think you replaced it before when I was here, or started.
You know, I can't even tell you what quality of machine was here when I was hired. I'd only and the newsletter at that time was like eight pages.
Yeah, it was a pretty dirty landing.
Yeah, uh, you know, we've done several issues of sixty pages. And, you know, when I started here, it just wasn't anywhere near that, I mean, we weren't putting all the minutes in. And then we put the minutes in and we were putting all the claims, I mean, we just keep including more info, which I think is great. I think it's a wonderful service for the city and I with always support, having the equipment that we need to do it. We didn't used to have the big paper deck. But, I mean, like I said, you're just constantly loading paper, because each of those small drawers only hold a ring. Or the big paper deck will hold seven, I think, Tina's an expert on that, but, um, we didn't use to have the machine that gives it a square edge, you know, again, that is a wonderful thing to have, um, we would never want.
Somebody called my phone, I was gonna say, what's happening?
I would, I would just say this real quick. All the work that goes into the newsletter, to have it mess up when it goes to printing is a pain in the rear for everybody involved with it. There's so much work that goes into that before it even gets to the copier, and then not to have a copier work. Well, every year the volume goes up, it doesn't get by us, but.
You know, I want to, ready to drop into the net here.
Uh, you know, and if if it's broken and they can't get it fixed for three days, sometimes the copier is just completely down. I mean, we use that to scan, you know, we use it for other things too. So it, it's a vital.
So if you get a blue one, will you just keep the old one and you just?
Well, uh, what we did with the last old one, we sent it to the shop, I guess we would ask the fire department shop or the library if they want it. Um, they can take them back, they can wipe them and take them back. Uh, that's our decision to make.
So I'll ship it, I'm not going to fit that, I have a mission, where do you get, what would be a dream, a dream like a trade, what would they, what would they give you for it?
I don't think anything, um. And I think, I think there's people back here that want it. Is that what I'm getting, or you don't want?
Those are my additions for a fire truck, not for a printer. I would have to have the city, uh, Tina and Stacey come down and tell me not to run it.
It's, it's easy to.
Are you gonna need a budget amendment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're gonna do a budget amendment anyway.
Sure.
For lots of different things, um, that was another reason I thought, well, let's bring it to the council now, because at your October meeting, I planned to have you set the hearing date for November budget amendment, I'm hoping somebody know about the computer upgrades. We've purchased the parking lot now that was in the previous budget, not this budget and this, there's just lots of things that we should know about other projects too, so, yes, absolutely.
You need to use it every day, you know the cost. What? I'm ignorant here on what's invested.
What's your recommendation now?
What's your recommendation?
Well, I have concerns of not upgrading to a heavier machine. Do I feel that it's guaranteed that it's going to last longer than four years? I don't, you know, I don't know that. But I have concerns not upgrading to a heavier machine, but it's a lot more money. You know, so.
That's the thirteen and twenty five, you said.
Yeah.
Can just replace it every two years.
Right, yeah, that's what I was wondering, you know.
That's what she's getting at.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't know what the best route is. You know, the Canon, uh, salesman, you know, said, well, your screen won't change, but that's minimal. And, uh, both salespeople talk speed of printing. That's minimal. I mean, our newsletter is going to take a day and a half to print, no matter if it is eighty or eighty-five, you know, per minute, but the, the time that it takes us to copy is not a big concern to us. And of course, regular copy is not a concern at all. So the.
Comes out of your newsletter, right?
What?
Comes out of your newsletter, right?
Would you rather try the one that's local and then?
Cynthia, tell him you want the big one.
Yeah. Now, I wasted way too much time on some show, I can't help myself.
You know who would help pay for the bigger copier? I think the old one out of the shop, one of the old clean dollars, utility, why? Why, a lot of copies, obviously.
I couldn't help myself.
You know, initially access, when they came out with their cost book, I mean, they did a lot of research with their cost book, they, you know, suggested we replace all of the dust tops, no. And then they had two other options that they felt was really kind of at our production needs. And they won't even fit in that space.
Okay, motion.
So the one that they're uh, quoting us will fit in there, but it's not enough, right? I, it's way more.
I, I think, wait, I gotta say that bigger is better, the Jager one or the thirteen tower?
I'm confused, whether you want to convince them, whether you got a cheap one and it's two years or.
The bigger one, they handle a higher bottle.
Even though the name.
Yeah, that's so good.
Well, how do you know it's not just the.
All right, so she wants some, I'm also, I'm really.
What are we moving on?
The big one. I, is that one or is it? The big one, is that one or is it the big one?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Does someone second?
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
So that was the ABS Canon, right?
The paper.
Okay.
Big boy.
All right, okay, Glenn's already, tell us about this um proposal from the G S.
Well, G S will probably be in here, if you remember, for last panel, three, four, five years. But trying to get in the last year, they've been on the area. Uh to do part of our street to try to help them, see how to compare to our chip and seal. And so forth, they ended up last year just going a bit higher, so we never did even let them do that area early. Well, he keeps coming back to me and he has a proposal to do a free construction to us. Um it'd be the end of this week, next week, a portion of our road, uh East Sanitary Road. Even we just kinda like to do it for free, no cost to us, we just have to block out. A portion of the road, which I think we can allow traffic pretty easy around without affecting too many people. And be out of commission for a couple hours, as long as everything goes good. Um let's just like the permission to do it. I'm to the point where I'd really like to kinda see it, I've seen some of this other areas that they have done. Looks okay, I'm not really for it or against it, but. The application, they have different levels of application, three different levels. And the project they would be bringing for this area is the heavier application, so it's kind of the elite. Part of it, but just wanted to see what your guys' thought is and.
Good, so you guys obviously good for prep?
Yes, which is.
No charge for her.
No charges, so.
I say, give her a try. That's a motion to give her a try.
Okay, for a second. Um thank you very much.
Aye, 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 let's meet this up. We can do ten topics in ten minutes.
All right, she says.
Do you want siding on your fire?
So here's the scoop, I'll make it short.
How you know? So during the, yeah, during the deal with the uh the addition that we're doing. I never thought about maybe we should. Put something in there to match the siding with the existing building to the new building. We didn't do it the first time, but now that it's getting a little more noticeable, maybe it might not be a bad idea. So what I was thinking was, we, I threw a bid in. That one of the guys got, we were supposed to get a couple other ones, but somebody's mother passed away and we kind of lost track of it. So I don't have any other bids I could get them. My question to you is, is it something that you would be for us doing? And if so, I will bring you more bids next month, but they're planning on starting the project in October. Not that siding part, but the construction, so if I can get with them and say, hey, can I get another bid? To completely do the rest of the siding.
Yeah.
To make it match. Now here's the question. Me not knowing anything. In the bond that we got to do the addition, it's not worded that we can reface the fire restriction. So my proposal to you, Ms. Goodman. The bond we received or that we got the money for was like three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Well, the architect bid was half of what we thought it was gonna be. And the building itself is, was one seventy-five, plus the concrete around the outside would be on top of it. Which Brian didn't think would be too crazy. So there's going to be quite a bit of this bond money left over that we can't use on the building. That Cynthia will spend on some other project.
That's great, maybe a bond.
Maybe a printer.
Any other.
So if there was any other money that we could swap out to do this project is what I was asking you tonight.
So. You can.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
There's a, there's the pickleball court, uh there's um sewer lining, you know, there's other projects listed in the bond. But it doesn't say for, they never say for any other lawful purpose, that's our law.
What's that? Paint it. I've got a guy that's gonna give me a bid on painting the siding.
So basically, we just have to shuffle things around, this is. Do a little shell game to get.
So you're, so, so I understand, you're gonna come back with uh more bids. And but if they choose to accept one of the bids, you would like this additional work added to your budget?
You.
And not come out of your savings.
You. If that's okay with you. I can take it out of savings, I'm just kinda holding that because I still haven't found out if we got that bond through here for answer, huh?
Take it out of balance, but you can.
So I thought that we need a motion, but we just didn't.
I just want to. I mean. You do a nice addition, you got two pieces of siding that don't match, makes total sense. Twenty-five years old.
Yeah. The old one's stuff's only nineteen sixty-nine.
Okay.
Some of you weren't even born yet. Not you guys out there, you were all born. Thank you.
Okay.
Moving on to number fifteen. Concerning the traveling tasters by the hotel license, Cynthia. This is for an event that they're gonna have on uh at one thirteen Williams Boulevard where the buildings on the boulevard are.
Yeah.
Um not this Saturday, I think the following. Saturday, maybe two weeks from Saturday. Do you know the date?
It's just thirteen, um twenty, and then four, so.
Yeah, I think maybe it's the twenty seventh.
What do you see?
Um it's a. Uh what do they call it, ladies night out there? And this is a trailer that's a bar. And they're going to be wanting to serve at it and uh the owner of the traveling taster says she does this all over Iowa.
I'm not gonna say anything other than I don't care if I'm motion, you know, nothing, come and say out any of that.
Okay. Process that are interesting because the state requires less for this than they do for the agent doing outdoor event.
Yeah, uh the fencing isn't required for the state, all they needed was a letter showing that they had permission to do this on the property. I was. Completely mystified when I talked to the state about it. I said, what? Okay.
So no concerns from my counsel? Aaron, we have a motion now, second. Have a motion, second? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Shane's gonna talk about the application number three for well number four.
Yep, so the application for well number four. Includes all the well drilling and most of the site work I shredded in. Um but a little bit of site work left and um well development, I'll be testing things like that, this remains. Any questions?
And we're still drawing funds from Lynn County's ARPA, right?
Motion to pay it.
With the revolution, so uh you uh I will call you.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. All right, um Shane's gonna talk about item number seventeen. Um stats update on West Sanctuary Road intersection project.
Yeah, so the intersections project, Boomerang is the contractor. We had a early start date of July seventh, late start date of August fourth. And they probably are well aware, they have not started yet. Um we've been coordinating back with, working with them. Apparently they had issues getting their de-wiring contractor lined up, um something that's tied to the. Data centers and their issues that they've had, and they want to get rid of it.
Yeah, I thought they were barred, but technically I don't think they're actually barred, I think they just are choosing not to work in Lynn County after they got their.
So, yeah, they're not barred, so.
Yeah.
They. Yeah, Boomerang go with this particular contractor, but. It sounds like coordinating with Lynn County Public Health that they'd have to get approved through the Lynn County Attorney's Office.
Which I think they will, it's not an option.
Numerous months.
Well, if we've learned anything, just do it without permits, there's no record.
Are, are all the details finally moved under that?
I think uh Lynn County's got one pedestal that needs to be moved about ten feet. From the future intersection, John's gonna follow over them today on that, um but I didn't have a choice to follow up with him. Other than that, yeah, all these, all these have been relocated, so. Um. So Boomerang has given us a revised schedule and Mary Ann touched on this forward more, but. Right now, their start date is September twenty ninth. But my understanding, they still won't have a de-wiring contractor lined up. We didn't talk with Mary Ann and I mean, gentleman's name on Friday. Keegan. They are looking into the possibility and there was a sheet I handed out at the beginning of the council meeting. Directional drilling, the east sanitary sewer section, so the sewer that's gonna run up northeast of the frontage road. Professional drilling that, which I assume would leave some of the de-watering, but not all of it. Maybe. I mean, some of that. Their, their latest schedule, then, they started the twenty ninth, gets them to their milestone. Basically Tuesday, May twelfth, which would then allow the bridge contractor to come in. Well, it gets them to Monday, May eleventh. And the bridge contractor is starting on May twelfth, which the original date was them finishing up. The May first, with the bridge contractor starting on May, they were. Just gonna push back for over a week. We're trying to wrap things up on the bridge side, so we're proposing the bridge contractor to start on June first. Four weeks after the. Post start date. So hopefully that gives the city, gives us time, gives the bridge contractor time to get the bridge installed. Hopefully the project completely, completely. Fully completed by the end of the twenty twenty-six construction season or on Thanksgiving. Um at the very least, hopefully gets to them to the point that they can, if a bridge open, graphic by Thanksgiving, but. Things get delayed anymore, that's probably not gonna happen, it'll be a question of the time for the start of the construction soon, so. That's what I'm saying.
So Shane, you're proposing um. Pushing back the bridge, start dates to the first?
So right now, we don't have. I mean, again, Mary Ann without further ado, on their schedule, they gave us this schedule about Beegill. Thinking, oh, like last Monday or Friday before I forget. Um. Yeah, but again, they still won't have a de-watering contractor lined up and also looking to start there.
We talked to Nor- Northern Won't Do It. Kelly is uh busy until the end of October, you're the other, probably closest person. So we've reached out to three other, two of the three have contacted us, one has not at all. Uh Mercino is like Western Iowa, Omaha, that area. So they, they were here today and um they actually looked at everything today, walked side with us, talked to us about it. So they're going to um. Get a quote back to us by Friday, and they can start actually, we can go with them. They'll, they can start Israeli until first, but we have to get a plan from them. And then we have to get it to Shane, then he won't look at it until Tuesday. Which is like an extra hurdle and then. Then it has to go to Lynn County, so it depends on how long all that stuff takes before we can start.
Yeah, the Lynn County permitting process and voucher, we say that.
Yeah.
So, so that, that'll be on the bank.
They're, and they're going to give us a price on the de-watering involved and then on the directional boring. That merchant, is the problem is we have to keep that, we have to keep access over T E, so we can get back there. So we can't just tear it up and add the de-watering wells their way. But we're looking at that.
So we are, we are finishing up the bridge plans. Here we leave the form of the schedule, so we're moving forward to the schedule of. Just the, the bridge contractor showing mobilizing to the site and moving the bridge on June first. So that provides a little leeway on the current schedule we have. Um you know, things can push back a couple weeks after that. But I guess the expectation from the city staff is that Boomerang is gonna have to, depending on what works with the de-watering contractor, they're gonna have to. Mobilize multiple crews, do some creative thinking, come up with a way to get that project done, sort of.
Part of my other concern is this is gonna be almost as long a project as supposed to put in five, but. Could, could, too many delays, you're gonna have a few winter seasons. That had a messed up.
Well, de-watering is supposed to run a branch into it, so we can talk about the why and whats, but it's. That's the problem that happens, so you just not deal what you got before, really. There's no other options, right? I mean, doesn't sound like, so you just deal with what you got.
You only have so many de-watering contractors, that's the problem. None of them, there's no one else. Like they said once, for a whole, right, Omaha. When I think of shooting, there's nobody close, so.
And Shane, if I understand it right, you have to get something submitted to the DOT by the end of September?
Uh yes, next Monday or Tuesday, I need to get our smittles in, and I'm not sure exactly in the schedule that has to go in then, but I'm sure they have, so. Yeah, hopefully, so Brian can get sort of, it has a solid confirmation on their schedule. If they're de-watering on us, they would have to.
Well, and, and understand that once that's submitted to the DOT, we need Boomerang to be committed to meet that. You know, to do whatever necessary to meet that deadline, that's what I think what staff was stressing.
So do we need to also run that just some update too?
I don't know if there's any motion, I mean, it's really just an update, um from where we're at. Just maybe, better plans, documents, or something like that. Well, before, if they get, keeps getting delayed, now what would they, the bridge part of the, the building costs?
Yeah, they'll be cost, I mean, that'll be something that, so you'll have to determine, you know, impacts of the intersection delay project. Possible cost, you just save yourself, that comes to be driven out of the back, so.
Okay. Anything else on that, Shane?
Well, I'll answer any questions.
Okay.
Alright, if I can.
We're on to item number eighteen. This is our temporary stoplight event, want, want about that or?
Ken, I can tell you what I know about it, um.
It's there.
Yeah.
Who approved that?
Well, that's started.
City limits?
That started way back, that what I know, started way back in January, February, back when Dustin was here. That was some of his negotiation back then, he mentioned it to me. And that's why I've heard about it.
There was science.
The week before happened.
Well, they put a sign out, but we never actually approved it.
Yeah, so.
You guys wrote their, what's going on here?
Yeah, but. Surely, that's all I know about it, they know, they initially talked about it, mentioned it, back when Dustin was here and. Never heard anything until about a week before it was installed, we had, still.
When Lynn was here, at our last meeting, they mentioned it, yeah, and that's when, and that's when I spoke up and said, well.
If we want to write tickets about a traffic control, it's gotta be in our organs. So that's why it's here on the agenda. And at that, he, he goes, well, it was always on our drawing.
So make this official. How long is that gonna be up in perpetuity?
Us.
Do you wanna make?
You're the party, I'm the one.
Your big party, my favorite one already does.
No, I'm just saying, it hit some point.
Do you wanna revisit and only do it for like a year or something? So they're not just like.
For about. Two weeks. I'm already irritated by the damn thing. The same.
It does say temporary in the ordinance's verbiage, but I mean.
Will do some.
Yeah, there's another.
Well, you could just now pass an ordinance and run the red and say. Wasn't in the ordinance.
Okay, Tom, complete.
A big truck was.
Too late, only on one side. Uh, pass the ordinance is, it's fine. We can read, we can read both disordinants later if it always, Mary Ann.
So we have a motion?
Back.
Go call Grace, huh?
Bye, bye. Bye, bye.
Yay.
Oh, why? Vote, this is Ben.
Okay, should this spend?
Second.
Go call, turn it to me.
Bye, bye.
Just because I can. And motion for final passage and adoption.
Motion, second.
Go call, Mary Ann.
Nay.
Bye, bye.
Bye.
Okay.
Is that the record to all?
Yeah, no. Show.
Okay. Moving on to number nineteen. Um, another, an ordinance change, though, yours?
So first off, I'd just like to tell you, apparently the battery of my computer only lasts for four hours.
Yeah. Yeah, you got plenty of time, yeah.
So what I'm looking for here is we, uh, right now, there is nothing that we do not say. Uh, about what is banned activities in the park. And so, one of the things that I've been noticing. Is we're having a lot more residents take their, uh. Nine iron and a bunch of golf balls out into our parks. And chip as if it was in a driving range. The problem with that is anytime golf ball would get lost in the grass. If a mower hits it, that becomes a projectile. That comes out of that mower about ninety to a hundred ten miles an hour. Not only would it be dangerous if it happened to hit a kid that was out there, or. Uh, nearby resident houses or a car that's driving along or something else. And so. I think we need something, we just don't have any teeth to tell people they can't do it. So I think I'd like to have something in my, uh. Ordinance for parks. And I added in there any illegal activity. Just so the golf thing was a good one. Then I like to get some signs up right away. Form two.
Any questions around that also? If not, do you want them?
Motion. Second.
Go call please, Tom.
Bye, 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 bye.
Bye.
Thanks, Mary Ann.
Now she's the one down there with the golf ball.
Alright, so are you interested? Monday, the.
Motion decided.
Go call, please.
Aye.
Bye, bye, bye.
Yeah, motion for final passage and adoption.
Motion, second.
Go call please, Tom.
Alright, nay, just kidding, hi, hi, hi.
Okay, thank you. Number twenty. That's the possible motion for hiring. Um. Who says replacement, well.
So, um, I drafted. This and suggested that we start taking applications right right away until Monday, September twenty ninth. Uh, your October meetings are fourteen, so that would mean that we would want to have a hiring committee and interviews between that time. Or we can make it through September twenty second and you think we need another week. In there for um. Filtering. Um. Applications and interviews. So that was one question. The other question is, do you want a hiring committee and so who? And then do you want? An added the newspaper, you know, the online or just maybe to the building officials group or how, you know, how widespread do you want this at times? Those are my three. Questions.
Since it's the department and I would recommend that we do have a hiring committee. And that, um. Myself, you're on that committee, um, Chris, although sometimes they say you're not supposed to hire your own replacement, but. That's up to council and then potentially. Then. Maybe somebody else from the council that would like to volunteer.
I think Chris definitely should be on it. He knows what's required to do the job and he's our city administrator.
Joe and Cynthia, then Chris. Plus one or two council members.
Good.
I think the last time we had a hard time getting anyone to. Remember there being a big.
I know one person applied, that's a good candidate.
Or village.
We have.
We've got a few, that was already made here, but it's still, we dwiggled with them pretty bad, at least in Dallas, I mean.
Because I don't know, unless we did have this. Cause Christian will have.
Well, we can change our minds if we don't have, yeah, that's forever, but. Oh, we need, I just want to come from that. Did I stand say yes?
I kind of have someone else.
Very good. That would do us five people.
That's funny. Do you wanna go with the twenty second or the twenty nine? Keeping in mind the October meetings are fourteen.
They haven't run until. October twenty second.
Yeah, September twenty second or twenty nine. Unless you wanna do it faster, but. It's not a very long time, it was, I think, three.
Twenty seconds. Twenty seconds, two weeks, not about two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yeah, that's all that time.
Um, two each, yes, we.
I need one to find that.
Okay.
Twenty nine.
And then do you want it in the cassette? Do you want to try to target the? Builder, building officials organization? Uh, or just locally?
Building officials organization, I would think would be.
I think so too. I think. Probably to add in the cassette would not hit as much as the building officials.
But we ended up doing less than, did we do LinkedIn? Did we do?
For the admin or for the building administrator? I'm sure the building administrator, we just did the cassette in local. Cause we weren't in to the, uh, for the administrator, we did.
Development.
Did, uh. We do indeed, yeah, not indeed. We did indeed for one other one.
Well, we hired you.
I put, I put the same answer on LinkedIn, but since we have three followers, it doesn't really help. When was the last time before? I don't know, it wasn't the first.
Separate recruiter is what we just used for the city administrator. And we used indeed when we hired, um, our kid from California. Tyler, Tyler, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Before the door career, there's another.
Yeah, that's the business. Yeah. So if we do, maybe the Iowa lead, the building officials and locally, is that enough?
Yes.
Okay. Alright.
Also for, I apologize, I have to leave. Get self-paid for this meeting.
I'm gonna pay that for the notes.
Okay.
I don't care about all five, well, we're, they're good. I throw them off.
Alright, you didn't need much for that, you just wanted to go.
Yeah.
Alright, Brian's, uh, talking about buildings.
Yeah, that was a project I took on, uh, as the rest of the Federfield Party Mine. Uh, there was some miscommunication on who was going to do the PO. Project is complete, so this, I come back and do what we need to do with paperwork, but. And the rest of the stuff that was involved in the park mine didn't mean PO requirements, so. This was the, the only thing that got over because it went past ten thousand, we're here to talk to you. I guess if you have any questions.
So the projects then, maybe need approval.
Yes.
Over ten thousand.
This one been done in sections over time, right?
Yes, we just loaded into two, two years now. Yep, it's been really big, honestly. Motion over.
You second?
Second.
On banner please.
Hi, hi, thank you.
Thank you. Ask Len to talk about some poles or potential mower.
So this is a kind of, uh, attachment for the scale opener, so it's another piece of equipment for, well, of course, what we have currently. Of, we're then looking at, it's a swing on her, or brush mower, so it can. Swing over to the side and reach out for other inches along the banks, along the ponds. Just trying to get the areas that get a little hairy. Trying to make the safe for the guys, so. Got a few different codes, start equipment and two different machines are both basically brand new. One, they call it the demo. So it's a little discounted. Uh. For twelve thousand eight seventy five, uh. I've got others online, the cheaper, found a cheaper one, but it's down in Texas. Uh, but that doesn't count. The setup on the machine and everything else and. I'm a little concerned about that for getting parts and. Just because they're in Texas, so. If you guys are approved or have any questions about it, I'd recommend the demo one. Start with them.
And is this in your current budget?
It would be split between streets parks and probably a little bit sewer, um, but yeah, we have nothing there to cover.
So.
Sorry.
On there?
Bye, bye.
And that was worth a twelve thousand eight seventy five, probably right.
For a demo.
You have no attachment for the mini too? Yes, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
But is that, the biggest, like a rail or is that like a fresh pair too?
It's a, it's a natural roller, yeah, because negative with that is, it's so heavy. Sure, so there are supplies holder catching. That carries them through, but we don't wanna give her the. Still use it.
Okay, wanna talk about? On Brian to me.
Brian, gee. So last year, as you guys know, we did, we were experimenting on the paint. Uh, we bought some brand from, uh. D O T, exactly. And the experiment here in there, and we, kind of conclusion, for most parts, those were pretty good. Uh, the helps from combining, like they say, it does a lot of the, the so to bond right away with the. The certness where if you don't brand it. You can bond to it, then you fight it, weeks on it, and it's like, build it up and get it back down to. They. They still have the hundred percent so water, but, um. For the amount that we used last year, we kind of discovered that maybe we don't need as much as what we did in the previous years. So we went back to looking at machines again. The first couple of machines on there, and then I have listed their same darn machine. It's a, basically, it would be like a. Uh. Like landscapers. Machine that's really not automated, everything's manual, so forth. The next one up is from Frost, it's automated. There really is hardly any difference between that and the first cheaper one. Except that it has some automation. So I couldn't really justify the. The difference between the seven thousand to eighteen thousand. Uh, the machine that kinda like, it would be the future line one. But the, we have only year marks about twenty thousand of our budget to cover this. So since I'm still kind of in that more experimental stage, I'm kind of leaning towards that seven thousand dollar. Machine. What that will do is it will. Be big enough so we'll be able to make enough brand to get us through. Hopefully, ten years down the road, till your town grows and so forth. So it's not automated, which I'd really like to have, that would be a lot. Easier of the guy's equipment and everything else, but. Still kind of starting to point. Well, if you guys approve, I'd like to go with that.
So this just makes it, or does it also put on the back the truck?
It's made, it's, it's able to, from the maker to the, the, your tanks. So you can have a storage tank, which I may end up purchasing these small storage tanks, like what we do for water entries. Will just be another above ground tank. That we can store it in until we need it, or we'll use tote and or holding tote. For all need. But yeah, it would, I've just been getting it, it would bump off to the. Your machine.
And then you got a boom or something on the back.
Yes.
On the interception.
Yep.
That's set, then you already had that.
We made it, right? Made a lot of that. If else.
So which one?
Either the first two, and they're basically, they're the same machine, one's from, um. The main MK, um, is the actual manufacturer of it. And Turbo Tech Technologies is the principal name, so they get it from MK. So depending on tariffs and everything, it might vary a little bit from the cost of the tariffs now. But it'd be. Really kind of prefer to, to approve one or the other, depending on what they come back with, with their cost and the terms.
Can't we just approve either of the two, depending on which one's cheaper, if you could get into your. I think, I just, can't we do that? Or just one of, one of those two, depending on. Maybe, uh.
Sounds good, I mean, second.
On either.
Bye, bye.
That way you can figure it out.
Yeah.
Um, on there?
Yeah, alright, yeah, sorry. Thank you, appreciate it.
Is that just from rodeos?
Yeah, that was three, that was gross.
Yeah.
Wait.
I was gonna say. Hell, yeah, my place is in the old one, yeah, I don't want that much water.
Okay, um, Chris, we put in some information here that Lynn County Sheriff's Department. Had approached them with on. Block safety license plate recognition cameras. I don't know. Where, do you know anything about it?
Nope, I do not on this one.
What we see is what we know.
I look at it's like. Twelve thousand a year, every year, we incur it, every year, payments.
Obviously. This is the one where they, they read your license plate, yeah, and if you've got something going on, they.
It's to know who's coming in the area to be sleeping, as I understand it, but. It's also useful for missing persons. As well, they can tell a vehicle, an ambulance, know the vehicle. They'll put a hit out for that. That license plate, you know, all, all the cameras in the area will look for it, not just Fairfax, but it just covers this one fifty one. They need it well. So there is some good safety aspects to it.
And I suppose you could decide not to go with four, you know, they're saying that they recommend four would be ideal, but.
I'd say you do that, let's take your heart rate out here, right?
What?
Want to do one Fairfax Road, maybe none of your main homes out here. I don't think you do.
That's not a budget, isn't. When I read this, I'm like, that's interesting, isn't this a budget that's on the Lynn County Sheriff's side, not Fairfax? I don't know.
They want us to pay for that.
Yeah, if I did a scratch of my head, are they just wrong?
Well, I think.
For any.
All of this is. somewhat controversial with the public, same as with the traffic cameras. So you may want to think about that.
I'm not afraid of like what positive she said, but it's still. It is very big brother, so.
It is, these are not. Flavors, it is. Rather than money producer, oh yeah.
Sorry. If I would recommend, if you do, do two like this radar cameras that one on each side, so your face is both way before you're going. Send two of them. Why four too? But I don't know if you need them or not, but. I think it would help their. I think it would help the sheriff's department.
As long as they're on a road and we have a camera on. Yeah, I mean, if they're, if they're, we don't have a camera, we, we not. They're not being good anyway. So.
Or you could ask. Someone from the Sheriff's Department, they can talk to you about that or.
So we put one on Cedar Rapids, or get on, walk for, and roll through those towns, they wait for. The walkers got it. I don't know. You can follow them, it's the next month, we'll worry about them. Okay.
You want somebody to come talk about it?
Yeah. And if you have anything else to say on that, any?
I can answer questions about it. I mean, as far as like a law enforcement standpoint, these are extremely beneficial. It's a, it's a. State and almost national, you know, so it's like, there's a, like you mentioned in Amber or some of that, or Don't you, something like that. And say, is this ABC one, two, three was the car that they got into. They can say, okay, they've been coming from Dubuque, now they're in Springfield, now they're in Cedar Rapids, now they've been Fairfax.
Fairfax walking, so they're taking one fifth of one. They give people end up that way. Uh, I, I know the people, they're the big brother and tallies and said mention, these are not. Like. We don't, we don't have enough time to, one, to do that, two, that's not. The purpose of them, they're not tickets, not anything like that, it's. You know, there's a, a suspect has a warrant opposed to town and they drive by this camera. We can, it will alert us that, hey, this, there was a car here. That had a warrant. You can look at the direction of travel, are they going home or are they, you know, leaving town? There's a lot of different, I'm, I'm not fully up to date on a lot of this, it's Cedar Rapids is getting really. Successfully used to dial them, I know that they've solved a lot of. Significant crime, high profile crime with, with just cameras.
Uh, what would you do with your bank account or whatever?
Yeah, bring us right in, we're going to get Charlie or something.
But how do they monitor?
I think that's a dollar thing, camera. I, I don't know the, the aspect of how it, how it's totally monitored. I don't know if it's like a, a block, it's own system. It would be monitored or it would be handled with our criminal divisions on our entire bureau.
Hey, I, do we have some data, something breaks or something gets damaged? Do we have to, we pay to fix them?
Yeah, that's above me. I'm just, I don't.
That would be my gosh.
That's why I wonder.
It's one that you put it out, but then if it doesn't work, then do we have to pay for the maintenance?
I wonder if that's part of the money.
Yeah, I think we could have some quick questions, but I wouldn't be opposed to doing one or two just as a safety. Fun, you know.
But maybe two would be funny.
I don't know, I don't know their plans on all this stuff. I know that the reason they did probably save for is, you know, one fifty one. And that's another thing, because we get all these concerns about a man of traffic, a man of traffic, a man of traffic. Or if we get some license plates on these things, we can kind of. Be more proactive, although we aren't proactive enough, but it's. It's really unsafe to be, you know, when we make a traffic stop in the middle of a man trap. I can get smoked or laddered, you know? So, um, I don't know why they want four other than.
They can see more, sorry. I don't know. The locations would be.
Want some more information?
Yeah, reach out, see if they.
Yeah, I don't check does any timeframe deadline or anything, okay? No action. Okay. Number twenty five, uh, resolution. On um, authorizing and approving loan disbursement agreement on our water regen bond, yeah?
So um, we, for well number four, we had gotten a zero percent S R F planning and development loan for the engineering. And then we decided that we were going to use Lynn County ARPA's, R A RPA, and then get a construction loan for no more than five hundred fifteen thousand. To finish out the project. So this is actually putting that construction loan in place. We have a. Um, it shuts down the P and D um, zero percent and rolls that over into the construction loan. And uh, like I said, we're still drawing from Lynn County's ARPA, then we spend our ARPA, then we'll start to draw on the construction loan. Until the project's complete and, you know, hopefully we won't need the whole. Five hundred fifteen thousand, we didn't need the entire P and D amount. But this is just putting that last piece of this project financing in place.
Motion. Second.
Oh, please, Mary.
Hi.
Hi, hi, hi.
Thank you. Uh, number twenty six is um, simply setting a public hearing date of October fourteenth. Or our electric franchise ordinance with I T C, which is setting the public hearing date.
I T C reached out, um, their franchise is expiring and it's just. Um, there has to be a public hearing as part of that renewal.
Need a motion, someone?
Second.
Go call please, Tom.
Hi, hi, hi.
Thank you. The next one, twenty seven, is also another setting of a public hearing date of October fourteenth. This is to um, doc updates, the uh ordinances, Fairfax, zoning code, do this.
And regular code. It's, it's both the regular whole code of ordinances and zoning. I'm just about through the regular code, making all of our updates. And then I think the zoning code's already up to date, but I'll get through that before the next meeting. Um, but in order to uh re-adopt the codes, you have to have a hearing. Because you've got new stuff in them, although they have all been adopted, you know. Yeah, and then posted, uh, but it's just merging them all together, part of the qualification process, yep. Now, it's not making um. Updates like if the state code changed, you know, looking through the list of all those changes and do we want to incorporate that? Example fireworks, you decided, you know, just to follow their, you know, you're not going to tweak that or. Um, change those. Um, you, we can still go through this process, but this makes it at least up to date of what we put in place right now locally, so. And this is just set in public hearing.
Need a motion to set the public hearing date to October fourteen?
Motion.
Second.
Go call, Mary.
Hi.
Hi, hi, hi.
Thank you. In your packet, you have uh Chris's recommendation regarding a Eric's hourly briefing.
We briefly discussed this last meeting. You asked about it when uh. You kind of assigned him, not kind of, you assigned him assistant building department duties. Um, so you've got Chris's recommendation in the um, history for Eric printed out. And um, the next item, the payroll resolution, I've got the two dollars drafted in there, but if you want to change it to something else, then do that.
Motion, Chris's approval, that's in the working order, mine, second.
On favor, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, hi.
Thank you.
So number twenty nine is Cynthia just said is a resolution to finalize that process. And also I highlighted the changes in the resolution. Of course, it's got Chris as the city admin. We didn't. Have one prepared for, you know, because we decided one day and had a meeting the next, so it's got him listed. Um, and then um Eric's change and then there were, I think, three park people that we added grounds. Responsibility to, is that right, Joe?
Yeah.
And that's updating those. Those are the only changes and they're highlighted.
Need a motion?
Motion. Second.
Go call please, Mary.
Hi.
Hi, hi.
Thank you. Number thirty, uh, resolution, uh, updating our signatures and bank accounts.
It's just um adding Chris um as the city admin. They haven't done that step yet either.
Motion.
Motion, second.
Go call please, go ahead.
Hi.
Hi, hi, hi.
Moving on to the client of any questions on the bills?
None. Next time.
Hearing none. Need a motion, please.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Hi, hi, hi.
Thank you. Thirty two. Opportunity for citizens to not on the agenda, we would get that spoken. All right, um. We're onto mayor's. Um, yeah, so, all right, I think we already mentioned that the bank lot purchase transaction is already closed. So, and when Chris comes back and they, we anticipate that he'll be. Organizing with the library board and. American Legion.
Yeah.
Voting next steps.
Well, it's officially ours, so we need to know that. We need to start to compare on that.
Mm-hmm.
Great, so assuming the.
Yeah, don't wait for Chris to.
But it's bad.
I mean, I don't know, it's not even that clean then.
Yes, right. Um. Also, next week, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, until I will leave in the comments.
And Chris is planning on coming just Thursday. He gets back from British Columbia sometime on Wednesday. Plans to go to Des Moines on Thursday, at least that's where he left. Yeah, definitely. And then, but be back here Friday.
Okay, and then just one quick comment, um. Received a complaint today regarding um noise, middle of the night noise, well, I mean, from what was perceived as the. Future's lay down area. Has anybody else observed any middle of the night? Nice, it's a spoon then. It, no, I can do that.
I think like that.
Were they, are they close to it or they?
No, they, they. So.
I don't know.
I'm just asking if anybody else has observed that. I mean, I have mine that goes open all the time and I haven't heard that.
Was it a rehearing thing or just a one tiny thing?
A couple of times it was.
They didn't destroy the noise.
And I've reached out to, to Leighton and asked them if they're doing anything unusual in the middle of the night and like pile riding or something there.
I say, isn't there a switch, like a sidetrack, but I wonder if it's.
Well, that's what I'm curious, whether it's the.
They move towns all night.
At the barrel.
They're banging.
And there's side houses, side trams, yeah, we might go.
They're slamming that at late at night, I don't know. So I'm just investigating, just you're part of the investigation staff. The whole way. And I'm asking what their hours of operation are because the development agreement doesn't specify anything. But I think they pretty much decided they could do whatever they wanted, whenever they wanted.
Well, I think they said that it'd be around the time.
It's continuing to ramp up. Right now, we're in the early phases of it, then you have one building almost enclosed completely. While work's going to continue in there and as a second phase starts on the second building, as that is erected. They're not going to be swinging cranes at night due to low light, safety regulations on that. But as that site grows, they are going to introduce the second shift, which they already have. And then going to be working on the third shift. So, so it's going to be.
Just with the traffic in the morning, if you have a team on seventy six and William, that's getting pretty warm hard. But in the morning, it's like a man of traffic coming there first night in the morning. It's that curve just from highway right onto Williams.
You should see the death trucks and everything.
Oh.
To get off on the edge where to run up to the quarry.
It's bad.
They're off onto the highway.
Yep.
It was that bad.
Kind of like keeps replacing signs here and there, they keep knocking the hole right there.
That's essentially.
But the latest centers are in Cedar Rapids, we really have no control.
Right.
The attack and they're, I've been down, laid on the area. See, but I'm going to explore and try and get back to the rest of them.
What's going on the south? East side by that cherry veil, I'll go and, you know, what is that? That's another one there. That's a lay down here.
That's it.
It's over, I've been planning there and.
I think that's folded.
That's something huge.
Yeah. It's a hundred forty acres. And I might end up getting two hundred ones also done. Initially Cherry Valley was supposed to be chipped and sealed, the same was the dock with Art, but somewhere in the process, they got asphalt, but I, I drove down that one.
Well, that's all I have. Um. Oh, the president's not with you, I guess we can stick over that item. And yeah, I was just going to talk to the league conference, I don't think I have any of that. Motion, sir, turn to you.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Hi. What time is it?
Nine forty.
I started talking, I was going to talk. You win it.
What, might need quite a big event?
Over and under was nine forty five.
I don't know. Bastard.
Jim, oh, Joe.
Thank you.